A meeting to order at 6:00 PM. First, Maya, can you establish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith.
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan.
Here.
Vice President Rocha.
Here.
President Hernandez.
Here. Next, we'll head into closed session. We have two items. We have item A, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation case C-2500459, and B stipulated expulsion number 864. We'll return back to open session at 7:00 PM.
I will call the meeting back to order at 7:07 PM. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. Next, we have Item B, Reports from Closed Session. There are none. Item C, Flag Salute. Trustee Brown, can you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have Item D, Approval of Board Minutes for the Regular Board of Education Meeting of January 29, 2025. Unless there's any comments or changes to those minutes, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Move approval. A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the Regular Board of Education Meeting of January 29, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to Item E, the Approval Board Minutes for the Special Board of Education Meeting of February 5, 2025. Similarly, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes unless there's other discussion or changes.
I move approval. A second.
So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for the Special Board of Education Meeting of February 5, 2025. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to Item 4A, Superintendent's Report, I will turn it over to Superintendent Wayne.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and appreciate this opportunity to highlight some of the amazing work that's happening in Antioch Unified School District. If you go to the next slide, it's not... Yeah. And yeah, appreciate the programs and the support that students are getting inside and outside the classroom. So on March 13th, we hosted a Boys in Action event at Dallas Ranch Middle School. And it's part of our ongoing efforts to equip young males with the skills and knowledge they need to thrive in high schools and beyond. So it was a neat opportunity for the students to get some inspiration, to explore their interests in careers, to meet city leadership, and to focus on their emotional well-being as well. And one thing that's really neat, if you go to the next slide about Antioch Unified, is how every student is in a career pathway. And we have a Career Technical Education Team that hosted a business mixer on Tuesday, March 11th, at the Prospectus High School atrium. And so we had 60 attendees. And what's cool is having local businesses here to engage with teachers and more importantly, with our students. And so students from the Business Tech Edge and Consumer Services Programs got to share their experiences and their aspirations and engage with people who might provide them opportunities in the future. And so this is a kind of, when we talk about having, you know, career pathways and having the kind of experience that sets a student on a pathway, these are the types of events that make that happen. If you go to the next slide. And also, at the end of last month, we had our Black History Month Celebration at Antioch High School. And I got to attend and just really be inspired by our student performances. There was dance, there was spoken word, there were songs, and it was neat to see our Black History celebrated in our community. If you go to the next slide. And then, I shared this at the last meeting, but wanted to highlight the work that the district is doing in partnership with our CELPA, that's our Local Area Special Education Plan Group, around having this unified sports events where... And the unified refers to the fact that this is our students who receive special education services with general education students as well, who engage in these sports activities. And so that was really neat to see. I got to see Antioch and Deer Valley High School compete in the basketball event. And it was so fun to see one of the students who's on the Antioch High basketball team supporting the students in this unified event. And he was so excited to have gotten seven assists. So the students who receive special services made seven baskets in a row. It was pretty impressive. And so it just, you know, these are the kind of activities we want for our students to be, you know, engaged and learn how to work with each other and have some, you know, compassion and humanity when they leave our district. Next slide. And I'm out visiting schools, and a lot of times I do informal visits, but I did go to see the implementation of our UFLI literacy program. There, I know there was a report to the board right before I started, but I just want to speak, seeing it in action, how impressive it is. It's based on the science of reading with a focus on foundational skills. And so far, from what I've seen, there's real consistent implementation, which, you know, every school, every classroom has its own unique culture and needs. But there are some practices that need, that all kids need to be exposed to regardless of which school they go to in the district. And these are some of those practices, and we're seeing it implemented across the district. A shout out to Deborah and the literacy team that are providing that guidance and support. Also really appreciate how the district has at East School, you know, a reading intervention teacher, and how they're embracing not just providing intervention for students, but also supporting staff and learning about the program and tracking their progress. So I did want to share on the upper left there, I was just so impressed, I was doing a visit to Belshar Elementary. And this is in the upper left, that's every student, their progress from first through third grade. And on the top, you can't tell, but it's like what reading skill they're working on and where they need to go. From learning CVC, consonant vowel consonant words, to digraphs, the different blends they make. And just that level of data being so public and for teachers and the reading intervention teacher to discuss, that's the kind of, that's what we see that really will indicate that we're going to have all of our kids reading by third grade. And so initial results are promising and looking forward to seeing the end of year data that... And more importantly, what I've heard from principals and teachers, they're looking forward to seeing how the kids next year, like the kindergarten who got this all year, what they're like in first grade when they show up after a year of this. So we'll continue to provide updates on this. And then, last slide. So I've gone to every school, I have three more to get to that I'm going to get to tomorrow and Friday. I just want to name, like, when I do the informal visits, because it's also important to see like what it's like just when you show up at a school. You know, sometimes I get to engage with the principal, and other times, like, you know, they're in an IEP. And so I just visit the school with other staff. But they've been welcoming and safe environments, and I am impressed with how the district has made sure that there's one entry point to every school, right? And that's, you know, when you get old buildings, old facilities, it's hard to set that up. But it's very clear, you know, this is how you're going to go in, any visitors, like, we want it to be welcoming, but we want it to be safe and where people know the point of access. You know, just the staff has been great that I've met, you know, clearly hardworking and dedicated to the students. And then love seeing the kids, you know, there's a lot of engaging and challenging learning activities. Up in the upper left, I was visiting Dozer Libby with the principal, and we wanted to... There was actually a number of kids who had their robot babies where they have to learn, you know, this is the health pathway, they have to learn how to take care of babies. So I was hearing some babies cry in the classroom and realized they hadn't been fed and they were needing to be taken care of. And then also, just, our last board meeting, I mentioned the wellness centers. Yesterday, I got to see mindful life in action, and so just appreciate the systemic social emotional support. Now, you hear my positivity and enthusiasm for what's happening in schools, and it's well-grounded. But I don't want to make it seem like there aren't real significant needs in our, in our district as well. I mean, first, I ask at every school visit I do, I say, what do you feel like I or the district need to know to support you at the school? And facilities comes up, I know we have a bond, you know, Associate Superintendent Robbins and I are meeting with the facilities leadership team. They want to support the schools, but there's a lot of needs, and it definitely impacts the students and the staff. And then while, like I said, like, there's safe entry points, you know, there's still, our student and families need support. And there are issues that are happening at schools where we need to focus on the student's safety, as well as just the various needs in our community. And so I was just visiting Turner today, they had six newcomers in the past week, and they're coming from Middle Eastern countries. So figuring out translation and support for that. And then, you know, we shared at the last board meeting, the academic outcomes are not acceptable. And while we're seeing like progress in early literacy, it's going to take a while to show up, and we need to maintain that sense of urgency and not just, you know, think because, you know, there's neat things happening, like students with robot babies that students are achieving at the level that is necessary for Antioch to be where we want our students to be. So I just wanted to, again, a lot of good news, but wanted to end with a realistic assessment of there are a lot of needs we have to address here in the district. That concludes my report.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Wayne. Moving on to Item 5, School Reports. We have Item A, High School Student Representatives Report. So I'll go ahead and invite up our student representatives for today to share their report. So you can go ahead and come on up, yeah. And as you're heading up, I also want to share, next week, the board has a Board Governance Workshop. And one of the things that we're discussing to continue to get more student voice is thinking about how we'll implement a student board member to be up here with us and sharing their kind of input. So I think there's additional opportunities. If students listening are interested in wanting to share more or be part of this regularly, if you enjoy coming up here sharing information, that's also an opportunity to think about as we look to implement that and talk about that at our next governance workshop. But with that said, I'll go ahead and give it to you to share a little bit about Dozer Libby Medical High School.
All right. Can everybody hear me? All right, perfect. Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Chloe Liang, and I am here representing Dozer Libby Medical High School. So I am very excited to be here tonight to share all the great things happening at DLMHS. February was an exciting month for student activities. Our Black Student Union, BSU, hosted a month-long Black History Month Celebration that ended with an amazing Spirit Week and Lunch on the Lawn event. One of the highlights was the double Dutch jump rope competition where scholars showed off their skills and brought so much energy to the event. It was great to see the scholars come together, have fun, and celebrate in an interactive way. Looking ahead, we have some exciting events coming up as well. Our spring fling is set for April 17, 2025. It's always a great way for scholars to take a break, have fun, and enjoy the warmer weather. But the real excitement is building for Senior Fall on May 9, 2025. This year, it will be held at the Pleasant Hill Community Center, and the theme is Enchanted Forest. Seniors are already planning their outfits, and I think it's going to be a magical night to remember. DLMHS scholars have been working hard at achieving amazing things. On February 21st, we held our Annual Day of Excellence where we celebrated our honor roll scholars. Nearly 60% of our scholars at DLMHS have a GPA of 3.0 or higher, which is incredible. It really speaks to how dedicated and hardworking our scholars are. I have even brought a small part of how we celebrated our students with me today, the goodie bags on your desk. Another huge academic achievement, 136 seniors applied and were interviewed for the California Seal of Civic Engagement. This is a big deal because it recognizes scholars who have gone above and beyond in civic participation and leadership. It's inspiring to see so many scholars take an interest in their communities and make a real impact. Our STEM scholars have also been making waves. On March 8th, Ms. Naviazdon and Mr. Lansky took a group of scholars to Mesa Day, where six scholars won awards and are now headed to regionals at Contra Casa College on April 12. Mesa is a great program that supports scholars in math, engineering, and science, and it's awesome to see our scholars excelling and pushing themselves to new heights. And of course, we can't forget about Project A, which took place last Friday. This was an opportunity for scholars to showcase their hard work, creativity, and research through projects they've been working on. Dr. Lopez Wisely even stopped by to check out some presentations, which meant a lot to us. If you missed it, you have another chance to see all our projects on Open House. I'd love to personally invite all of you to come by and see the amazing work our scholars have done. Our career pathways and special programs continue to give scholars hands-on experiences that go beyond the classroom. HOSA, Health Occupational Students of America, has some big things coming up. Over spring break, they will be attending the State Leadership Conference, SLC, in Sacramento. They also have two important training events coming up, a CPR training with the Medicine for Youth Club at Freedom High School on April 25th, and a Stop the Bleed training with Antioch High School's Link Crew on April 3rd. These experiences give scholars a real medical skill and could one day help save a life. Another major event happening soon is C-3 Day, College, Career, and Community Day on April 28, 2025. This is a huge opportunity for scholars to for scholars to gain firsthand experiences with college, universities, and professionals from different industries. Whether scholars are looking into higher education, exploring career paths, or seeking ways to get involved in their community, this day provides a valuable exposure to the possibilities ahead. It's an incredible way for us to start planning for our futures and connect with people who are already working in the fields we're interested in. In other exciting news, AP Biology scholars, along with some of our top performing juniors and freshmen, had the chance to go on a field trip to the California Academy of Sciences. This trip was made possible thanks to a grant we received from Cal Academy, and we owe a big thank you to Mr. Young and Ms. Anita for making it happen. It was an amazing experience to see science come to life outside the classroom. There's so much happening at DLMHS, and I'm really proud to be able to share all these accomplishments with you. Thank you for your time and for always supporting our scholars. We appreciate everything you do to help us succeed.
Great. Thank you so much. And maybe if you want to hold there for a second, as I think usually board members have comments or questions.
I, you are welcome to ask me.
Yeah. Trustee, like, any comments, questions?
Thank you.
By Spencer Rocha?
I'm just impressed.
Thank you so much.
I mean, I was trying to, you were going so fast, I couldn't catch everything. You had so much to say, I know that. And that's why you had to get it all in there. You did a great job.
Thank you.
You gave us a good picture of everything that was going on. I'm very impressed with the SEAL applications.
Mm hmm. Yeah, we had our interviews this past Monday.
Trustee, Kobo Smith?
No, I would just like to commend you guys all and all the hard work and congratulations on all the success.
Thank you so much.
Trustee Brown?
I'm going to say, not just amazing, but I'm going to be a little different and say amazing, because it's all amazing. I mean, I'm sitting here looking like I couldn't even write fast enough. I was like, oh, my goodness, all the stuff that you're doing. No, 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 not because you're speaking so fast, but it was just so much. And then I can just tell that you're really, you love what you do, because it's written all over your face.
Thank you so much.
And that was amazing.
And I wouldn't expect any less from a HOSA student. As HOSA, you know, as many people know, I, HOSA was a big reason why I pursued a career in medicine. So I definitely have a soft spot for all the great work that HOSA does. And I will see you all on C-3. I did sign up to come on by.
We're excited to host you.
Yeah. Great. Well, thank you again for, for, you know, sharing all the great things going on at Dozer Libby Medical High School.
Of course.
Great. Next, we have 5B, Antioch Charter Academy and Antioch Charter Academy II Annual Performance Review.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Wayne. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. Tonight, you'll hear from some of the members of the coadministration teams of ACA and ACA II. And we want to paint a picture of what makes us unique. Six out of the seven co administrators at ACA and ACA II are also teachers. One of the seven is our chief business officer. But all of our teachers participate in making decisions for the school while keeping what's best for the students at the center of that decision-making process.
We want you to picture a place where the staff adheres to three researched and proven effective philosophies. Our brain compatible learners participate in project-based programs, which foster critical thinking skills, including real-life experiences connected to the curriculum. Our students start their education in a Montessori classroom. Our Montessori teachers are child-centered. They prepare hands-on creative learning environments for students. Our Montessori teachers work in teaching teams in multi-age classrooms, provide uninterrupted work periods, and integrate curriculum. ACA's positive discipline component incorporates all members of the ACA community. Parents, staff, and students are part of the decision-making process at each slide, at each site. Picture a place where our students, there are 21 students in a mixed grade level classroom. Brain compatible classrooms encourage smaller class sizes of mixed grade groupings with the objective that students will progress along the learning continuum from easier to more difficult material at their own varying rates. Picture a place where students make decisions and create their own agendas for problem solving. Our positive discipline school, inspired by Jane Nelson's work, is a collaborative community where students actively participate in problem solving and rulemaking, guided by teachers who use kindness and firmness. Mistakes become learning opportunities, fostering responsibility and empathy. Picture a place where students have access to small group differentiated instruction. Teachers utilize diverse instructional strategies, including varied groupings, individual support, and hands-on materials to differentiate learning and assessment, ensuring all students can demonstrate understanding. Picture a place where each K through eighth grade student is part of a school family. School families are composed of one student from each grid level that stay together for multiple years, which they meet each month, once a month, and plan activities. Picture a place where students participate each week in art, music, pottery, and Shaolin Kempo karate. Learning experiences and art and music classes are also tied to the curriculum themes.
Picture a place where students have free access to Montessori curriculum and free access to integrated listening system interventions and free access to Lynda Mood Bell Reading and Math interventions. All of these programs can cost a lot of money when they're sought out in other locations.
The Sensory Motor Integration Learning Experiences, or SMILE, program, is a brain compatible gross motor movement program developed at ACA in 1998. Each day for 30 minutes to an hour, students engage in gross motor activities, yoga, and brain gym exercises to enhance their motor skills, focus, and endurance. Positive discipline and research show the importance of both parent and community involvement. Parent involvement is an integral part of the mission of ACA I and II. From the inception of our schools, parents and family members have given countless hours to ensure the count, the continued success of our program. Our three philosophies all emphasize active participation in the world. Our goal is to grow better citizens and community involvement is at the heart of what we do. Each year, our middle school students across both campuses engage with their local and global communities in meaningful ways. One way is through social political action projects, or SPAs. These projects allow students to take on real-world issues, raise awareness, collect donations, and volunteer time for local organizations. Study trips are a key element of brain compatible teaching and essential part of our program. The highly effective teaching philosophy emphasizes that students learn best when they're fully immersed in a concept. These being their experiences allows students to engage with their curriculum in meaningful, real-world contexts, deepening their understanding and making learning more memorable. Our graduate goals for both schools reflect the type of lifelong learners we want our students to become. As we tell our students, these soft skills will set them up, set them up for success in high school and beyond. For the past 26 years, the Antioch Charter Academy has had an impact on approximately 1,000 graduating students, and many of these students feed into the AUSD local high schools, where they've continued to pursue becoming productive, well-informed citizens. On the next slides, we have the data that shows the effectiveness of our programs. And if you're interested in learning more, feel free to look at our notes and our, the additional slides, as well as welcome, we welcome any kind of question you have. But we really appreciate your time, your support, and thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Yes, Trustee Brown?
So say, for example, a parent does not want their fourth grader in the same class as a sixth grader. Their vocabulary is a little bit more mature, if I can say that. How do you then talk to that parent and get that parent to understand the goal?
Well, I think parents, so parents, we offer tours every month. So our, we're constantly opening our doors to parents. So the tour is involved seeing everything. So we are only one school that does, has one class. And then we have a second school, again, one class. There's not multiple classes. So they, they know what they're kind of choosing when they choose that. They know that they're mixed age classes. And I think the, you know, concerns dissipate very quickly when they realize that the kids that come through our schools have sort of a sense of community, that they're not maybe your typical, like what you would picture a sixth grader is. They are just a little more younger, a little more calmer, you know what I'm saying, just because they've come up in our schools with the Montessori curriculum. But we do always have adjustments with students that we bring in at that level. But we just let those parents know as we bring them in, like, we're going to have more conversations because there's going to be some adjustments. But you'd be surprised how quickly the kids sort of like the idea that they can be themselves, and they don't sort of have to have any sort of, you know, issues with being in the same room.
And then what about your special needs students?
All those students are also in this, every classroom, fully integrated. And it's one of the strengths that comes out in our WASC reports, that you don't notice our kids, who's who, they're all there. And we have a, but I guess a typical percentage of special education students at ACA, and it's a little higher at ACA II even. But it's actually a strength. Where our, yeah, it's really nice. We'd love you to all come out.
I am.
We know, Mr. Wayne, you are going ahead, visiting all the schools in Antioch. You're welcome to come visit your charter schools that are here, and you guys as well. I know you're new board members. So if you ever want to come in and just kind of walk around, we've had almost everyone in this room there, you know, at different times. So you're welcome to come. And I think you'd kind of get a sense once you see how it works. Yeah.
Other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for presenting today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great. Moving on to six, public comments. We have item A, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from the public. The first comment is from Sharon Vella.
Greetings. Some of you are new to me, and I may be new to you. My name is Sharon Vella, and I taught from 1971 through 2005 music education in Antioch schools, and a long-term teacher. And I just very quickly, now a long-term ACA II music teacher. And I thank you for your support. It's been fun. That wasn't why I came up, but it's a joy to teach in this setting. And there's a lot of opportunities. I really came here to share that some of you probably are aware of this, and maybe you've already talked about it. But one of our long-term music educators, long time ago, Mrs. Betty Lawrence passed away two weeks ago. And maybe you have shared, she would have been 95 in April. She was still active. Those of you, when I came, her husband was on the board, and Betty had said, when I came to interview from Wichita, and he's, she said to him, you need to hire her because she's a string player. She's a violinist. Betty has been, was kind of the guru of keeping strings going into the schools. And the reason I bring it up is it's always a constant, maybe a difficulty to make sure music is part of the curriculum, but it is important to children. And when you listen, and to adults, when you listen to a movie, over half of the players playing those instruments are string players. And there are neighboring districts that do not have it, and you have had it for years because of teachers like Betty Lawrence and others who have followed and realized what the child wants to do is the joy, and they can have a lifelong joy with it. Betty was a co-founder of the Contra Costa Chamber Orchestra that's still, is still performing publicly. And then she, we started an all-district orchestra for some years in the 70s. And then she became the founder of the Antioch Strolling Strings, which brought notoriety to Antioch, because they go to Chicago, and it says Antioch Strolling Strings. She toured with them. Her daughter, Katie, co-taught then with her and is teaching at ACA Music still. But we need to not forget, and I wanted her name, Betty Lawrence, longtime music educator, string player, violinist. We sat together many concerts to be in the minutes of the AUSD program. She was teaching mostly at Sutter, and then she had three children, and they went through the schools here. But that was my goal for today, besides cheering on the charter schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing about the impact that Betty Lawrence had on this school district. I think as long as the board's okay with it, maybe let's take a moment of silence to make sure that also makes it into the minutes before we move on to the next item. Thank you. Moving on to item B, individuals to address the board regarding items not on the agenda from district employees. We have Amanda Freitas.
Good evening. Amanda Freitas. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Fremont Elementary. I'm just here tonight to kind of reiterate some concerns I've come before you before. The first is in technology. Our school site plan last year, when we set it for this year, one of the things we set out that we wanted was some more smart boards. We put in quotes at the beginning of the school year, actually, our principal did it before the school year even started, and we still haven't had those deployed to our school. Our teacher computers are old, they run slow, and I find it concerning that every time the school needs something, it's always, put it in your SIPSA, put it in your SIPSA. There's not enough money for us to do everything that needs to be done. We need some more support from the district. And a lot of us would be willing to just bring our own computers from home, but the district has blocked us from being able to use those as of the summer. So I use my own personal computer because it runs a lot faster than what I get from the district, but I can no longer use that in my classroom. And then lastly, with technology is color printing. I find it very concerning that we're micromanaging, and us as teachers can no longer color print. I have to send it to the secretary in the office, which is really just not feasible. They're busy doing their job. And honestly, I'm busy doing mine, and sometimes I need to print after four o'clock when they leave, and now I can't print in color. And trying to do centers in kindergarten, when they're not in color, are just not appealing to the kindergartners. We need better supports for our students. I find it very concerning that we keep denying students for testing based solely on their academics, especially when they've been identified as having a disability. These students need supports in other areas, like social skills, behavior support, emotional regulation, executive functioning. And we, when we just say, oh, well, you know all your letters and sounds, and you know your sight words, like, you don't need any help. I, that's concerning. And we just need better supports in general, education in general. I have many students in my class who have special needs, autism, ADHD, that are diagnosed, among other things going on with kindergartners. And me solely as the only teacher in the classroom, I cannot meet accommodations and modifications for the amount of students who need those. My classroom becomes very chaotic with trying to redirect students to make the choices that they need to make. And without giving the supports, I don't feel safe sometimes with my students in these schools. They have students in their classes that are hitting, pushing, throwing things, and there's nothing really being done to address the root of the problem. You know, just sending them in the office with the principal and then sending them back to class isn't addressing why they're engaging in these behaviors in the first place. And lastly, I just wanted to invite all of you to Fremont Elementary. We have been, our scholars have been working really hard on our annual school musical. This year, it is Annie. We are doing shows the week of April 14. We'll be doing daytime shows Monday through Thursday, and then we'll also be concluding with a nighttime performance on Thursday, April 17 at 5:30 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amber Dagan.
All right. Hello, I'm Amber Dagan. I am a first grade teacher at Fremont. I wanted to reiterate about technology, not being able to print in color. It feels very micromanage-y. I'm not a child. I am fully capable of taking care of the printing, my printing needs. And sending it up to the office and asking them to stop their job in order to print something for me is not very feasible, very cumbersome. I also wanted to talk about supports for Gen Ed students. I have several students that were medically diagnosed by their pediatricians with autism, ADHD, among other things. And Sped has said, that's not my job. They're doing fine academically, but they're not doing fine in my classroom. Maybe academically they're fine, but socially and emotionally, they're not. Currently, as it stands, there are no tier two or tier three supports or interventions for social emotional skills or behaviors, at least at Fremont. We have the wellness room, and that's it. We have a counselor, but our counselor spends the most, majority of the day running around the school, putting out fires in various classrooms. So the supports are just not there. This school year has been one of the most rough. I've been punched in the chest twice by my student. I've been punched in the chest twice by my student. I've had things thrown at me. I've seen my students and the rest of my students in my classroom get hit multiple times, chairs thrown, desks thrown in my classroom. I spent the first three months of this school year basically unable to teach. And there's this prevailing attitude that, "Oh, well, it's okay. It's first grade, they'll catch up." But let me talk to you about whether or not a student will actually catch up. A student that goes into third grade not able to read, 74% of them will continue to not be readers in ninth grade. That's important. And if you care about your scholars being on grade level, you should care about that. A student not getting intervention in kindergarten and first grade means that they're probably gonna go into third grade with deficits. First, kindergarten and first grade is where foundational skills are taught. They're not taught in later grades. They have to be inter, they have to be given as an intervention. So a student that misses out on foundational skills in kindergarten and first grade means they will go on into second grade without those skills, and that affects them for the entirety of their school career. You should care about that if you want your scholars on grade level. That should matter to you, to this district at least. Also, another thing that I wanted to point out, we have a reading intervention teacher, which is great. We need more of those. Our reading intervention teacher constantly gets pulled to sub in classrooms when there's no teacher, and I find that really problematic, because she should be providing reading intervention. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to seven district reports, there are none. Eight hearings, there are none. Nine public presentations, there are none. Ten consent items. So we have consent items A through S. Unless there's any discussion or comments, I will also entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
I have questions.
Yes, Trustee Lathan.
For items 10M, Contra Costa Special Education Local Plan, area master contract with Star View Adolescent Center, and then N, as in Nancy, so they're right next to each other. One is, I wasn't clear, I'd imagine this question is for Ms. Barra. I wasn't clear on if we're sharing the cost with the Sopa, or if we are, is this our cost fully? Okay, I'll just repeat it. It's our cost. And then, in terms of the student, so M, 10M, the cost, the dollar amount to support this student is a little over $500,000 a year to send them to a non-public school. Is there any way, and I don't, of course, we can't disclose who the student is, I don't know that, we can't disclose what their disability is or anything. But my question is, will this student, or students who we have, who are going to non-public schools, are they able to eventually come back? So does, does the non-public school, Star View, do they prepare our kids to come back to us to be either in a general ed classroom, SDC classroom, or get RSP supports?
This is a reg, oh, I'm working. This is a residential program, and this student is a senior. So this is to finish out the rest of the school year, so the student will not be returning.
Okay. And if it were a student who is not a senior, would, do they prepare students to come back into the general education?
I think it depends on what the students' needs are.
Okay. All right, thank you. My next question is around 10O and 10S, and this is around service agreement with cognitive diagnostic associates. So basically, student, a student, it sounds like was tested, or students were tested in our district for some kind of services around special education. They must have not qualified for something, that's what I'm assuming, or they did qualify for something. And the parent is saying, "We want an outside source to retest in this area."
Correct.
And so my only comment is, we've had this discussion before, you provided data, thank you, just showing the amount of times parents have requested additional testing after we've already done testing, and the, and the numbers in terms of what the outcome is from the outside tester versus the district. So if you can continue to collect that information.
Absolutely.
My curiosity is, why are parents, some parents choosing outside testing? It is costly for us, but not just the cost, is what is the, the trust between the parent and the district? And then what is the outcome? So is the outcome of the outside organization saying, "Yes, actually, they should be receiving these services?" Because if that's the case, what's happening in our testing, that we are not qualifying students when parents are concerned? And I don't know what they, I don't, I'm not sure what the answer is, but just if you can collect that data so that the Special Education Board Committee can, can know that information as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
I move approval of the consent items from A to S.
Great, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, so it's properly moved and seconded to approve consent items A through S. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on now to 11 action items. Our first is item A, the 2024-25 Second Interim Report. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Robbins.
Good evening, and thank you. Can you put the power, yeah, there we go. Okay. Good evening. So tonight is the night we're gonna present to you the update, which is considered the Second Interim Financial Report. Okay, just quick, the purpose and introduction. So the purpose of it is to give an overall financial condition of the district to the board, the community, the county office, and also the state. This information included in here is information from July 1st all the way through January Sort of the highlights is, we're a positive certification. For 24-25, we've increased our unduplicated count by 6.15%. And you will see in the multi-year that our deficit spending over the multi-year has, is decreasing, which is key. Here's our financial budget cycle. We've gone through this before, so I'll just leave that for your information for reading at a later time. So in our, so second interim information, I'm gonna give you highlights on what's changed compared to what we showed you at the first interim. And like I said earlier, the biggest change is our unduplicated count percent that changed by 977 students, or 6.15%. And so what that does is that helps us increase our LCFF revenue. And so our local COLA, so the state COLA stayed the same, 'cause that doesn't change, but the local COLA went from a negative .175 to a negative .46. So it was an increase in revenue. This slide is a slide that we've seen before, and it shows the enrollment, the ADA, and the funded ADA. And just to remind you, the funded ADA is actually the ADA that we're using in our LCFF calculation for the, the amount of attendance, the students are coming to school. And it's a three-year prior average, and it's a calculation that state's been allowing us to use for COVID. At some point, we will go back to our actual ADA, which is in the orange, and that is actually the, the amount of, the attendance rec, for our students. This is a comparison of our revenue and our expenditures as a whole for both unrestricted and restricted. As you can see, our revenues sources are here, and we've increased our revenue about 6.5 million, and I'll go through some details in just one moment. Our expenditures also increased by about 5.4 million, but overall, we had an increase to our ending fund balance. So we had our revenue increase a little bit more than what we're projecting our, our expenditures to increase, and so we did increase our ending fund balance, and we'll go through that in just a second. So, so here's the four different sort of categories in which we record our revenue. Our LCFF is our largest operational revenue, that's considered our unrestricted piece. And as I said earlier, we've increased it by almost 2.7 million, and that's almost directly related to the unduplicated count increase. Our federal revenue, there wasn't much change, just over, a little over 200,000, so not much change there. And you can see the categories where federal revenue changed. Our state revenues went up about $1 million, and it's some, some of the categorical programs or restricted programs that we either received new, or some of the adjustments that we made on the amount of budget that we thought we were gonna get versus what we got more information from the state, and we've increased. So a little over $1 million. And then our local revenue increased about 2.6 million almost, and the largest increase for that is our interest, earned income. So we do an estimate for budget based on how much we think we're gonna get in interest income. You don't wanna really rely on that, but we're seeing that we've actually got some actuals, and so we're projecting with the trends that we're gonna get a little, a million dollars more than what we thought we were gonna get. So overall, increase is about 6.5, 6.6 million. Our expenditures, here's the categories in which we record our expenditures. So the largest increase to our expenditures between first and second interim is our salary and benefits, and that's due to our negotiated settlements that we did with our employees. So remember, we don't include increases for negotiated settlements that are not actually settled, and so we did settle, and it was about 5.5 million between salary, salary and benefits. We did have a slight increase to some other salary and benefits directly related to some of the revenues that we received. So when you get revenue, you're getting it, especially on the restricted side, you're getting it for a purpose. So when we receive revenue and we increase our revenue, we also have to increase our expenditures. And so some of the increases from the increased revenue is salary and benefits related to, like, our after-school program, our summer programs. We did do an increase to materials and supplies, but it was basically a reclassification of some technology purchases. And that's kinda just the way we do accounting. We, we had it in the materials category, but because of the amount of each item, it should actually go into the capital outlay. So you can see there was a decrease of $1 million in materials, but an increase of 900 in capital outlay. So the changing of the classifications for some of the technology purchases. So overall, our increase is 5.4 million, two expenditures, and then our ending fund balance. So we're projected, as a second interim, to end the year with 50, almost 56 million, so 55.9. So remember, we talked about, it's important to understand what the components of that ending fund balance, what, what is made up of that ending fund balance. So you can see here in the middle, what, these are the restricted programs. So what that's saying is that we're projected, or we're estimating that of these restricted programs that we have in our budget, these are the balances that we expect to end the year. Okay? So of the 56 million, 32 of it, 32 million of that is restricted. We have our 3% economic uncertainty. Remember, we are required by the state to have at least 3%. Oftentimes, school districts have more, 'cause they have a resolution. In this district, they used to have a resolution that had an additional two, but that did go away. So at this time, we're required to have at least 3%, which we do. And then for the unrestricted piece, we have some other assignments on part of the ending fund balance. And the part here is, most of it is home-to-school transportation, so that is a restricted program, but it's, but it is tracked under the unrestricted side. And that's a program that you'll see next, at the next board meeting, that we're working on increasing our transportation program. And then the other two larger part of that is our medical benefits and our dental and vision. Just to remind you, we did a negotiated settlement last year with our employee groups, and we committed to spending down the ending fund balance and to pay for full medical and dental for all employees. And so this is the amount that we're carrying over at the end of this year to buy it for next year. And so our unassigned, unappropriated at this time is just a little under 400,000. So that's a component of ending fund balance. These numbers do change as the budget changes, but for now, that's, that's what we expect. So that's for this year. This is a slide that's gonna show you the general fund, which is unrestricted and restricted. And so I separate out the unrestricted, which is the LCFF mostly, and then the restricted. And so you can kinda see the difference with, what the ending fund balance and the deficits are. So primarily, our deficit is showing in the restricted side, and that's primarily due to spending down the one-time money on the restricted side. So that's in our ending fund balance, and then because we're not recording it as revenue, we're just recording it as expenditures, 'cause it's kind of like already money that's in our account, that's why you see it as a deficit. But it's spending down the one-time money, so you would expect to see a deficit when you're doing that. Moving on to the multi-year. So I just went over 24-25. And so what we do, and we're required to be a positive certification to show that we can meet our obligation for the current year and two years out. So for 24-25, we just went through, and here's the assumptions again. For 25 and 26, you can see the COLA that we're using to calculate the LCFF, the projected enrollment, the unduplicated counts, as well as the ADA, the funded ADA, which is down here. So we put that in, and we calculate, also in addition to, if you remember, we did a presentation last month to talk about doing some reductions as we look at our multi-year and trying to reduce the deficit. And so part of the budget balancing for 25-26 included reductions, and I list them here for you. So these are, these are our categories or items that we talked about at the last board meeting, and they're, they've been identified either through a resolution for not filling vacant positions, so eliminating a few positions, but most of those were vacant, not contributing to our deferred maintenance from our general fund, and then other areas such as lottery or some supplies, professional development, those types of things that we eliminated and we thought we could cut for next year. And then for the 26-27, the goal right now would be to cut at least 4.5 million, so there's a reduction included in the 26-27 expenditures that we'll have to identify at some point. Just, just a reminder, we have one-time money that we're spending, and we have positions budgeted in there, so we wanna keep our eye on that. And we need to start talking about, at what point do we want to try and figure out how to put these in the unrestricted side, or if we get categoricals that we can use, to use these positions, or, you know, reduce other things and keep these positions. So these are just, this is just information on the FTE that we're using the learning recovery block grant. So again, taking the multi-year, so we take, take all the assumptions that we used, and we put it in to calculate what we estimate our revenue to be, and the expenditures. And then you could see that we're decreasing our fund balance. Our deficit is, is reducing, which is key. And we're able to meet our reserves for the multi-year. And then this is the components of the ending fund balance and applied to the multi-year. How much do we think we're gonna have, and what is it made of? And so you can see some of the restricted programs. When we end this year, we're going into next year, and then we'll have a little bit left at next year, and it'll go into the following year. So that's, that's the general fund, that's the unrestricted and restricted side. I'll keep going, and then if you have questions, we can do it at the end. This is, these are just definitions of all the other funds. So school districts don't operate just with general fund. We have several other funds here that we operate, so I give you sort of what the description of the fund is, the number, and then sort of a little summary of what is kept in that fund. Here is a quick summary of how we think we're gonna end the year in each fund. And so I won't go into details, but if there are specific questions, I'm happy to take it tonight or at a separate time, but this is for information. Again, we're positive certification, so that means we're able to make our financial obligation for the current year and the two subsequent years. So next steps, we need to continue to monitor enrollment. Remember, we grew by 200, which, so that should start helping us. Right now, we're still using, our enrollments increased, but the, the percentage of ADA on that enrollment still hasn't improved over doing the three-year prior average, but it will still help. So we wanna continue to increase in enrollment if possible. The COLA changed for current year because of our unduplicated count. We're declining, the structural deficit is declining, but we do need to continue to monitor that. Learning recovery, which is our one-times, has positions, and we're spending down our ending fund balance, as you could see that in the slides. And then our negotiated settlements are all included in here. And then our negotiated settlements are all included in here. That's our timeline, and that's it.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Does anyone have questions? Maybe we'll start with trustee Brown.
Yes, so I just wanted to know, like, what preparations have you guys made financially in regards to the potential TKers that's coming in? Because I know you mentioned about transportation is extending, which is, you already know how I feel about that. So in preparations for these students who are leaving preschool, you never know, like, how many you're going to get or what district they're going to go to. So what preparations, that's a part of this report, that you guys are making financially that will be used for our TKers? And making sure there's enough space for them when they come?
Yes, so we are working as part of the bond with facilities on trying to make space, and we are adding TK classrooms at the sites where, I don't remember, we're adding, I think, two or three more. So we had two sites that had two, so every site had one, and then we added two extra sites that had two TK classrooms. So for next year, we're proposing to add four or five sites to have two TK classrooms. So we're expecting increase in enrollment. As far as facility goes, we're looking at the facilities that can be shifted so that they have the proper classroom that's needed. In addition to that, we're looking at the play structures, because that's one of the big things, too. And so there is some TK money that we can use for play structures, but as a bond project, we're also looking at it district-wide, and that's included with TK.
And then the second part of that question, would that also include bathrooms for them? And a good enough distance?
Well, that was the plan of how we chose which sites to have the additional TK classrooms is the ones that could accommodate the best with play structures and restrooms. Yes.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
I don't have anything.
Vice President Rocha?
You know, on the learning recovery, you know, the ones that you have here, how are we proposing to get those back in? Is that what we're, I mean, are you looking into?
That'll be a conversation we'll have to have. We'll have to look at all the expenditures and sort of put the puzzle together.
So that's coming up?
Yes. We, so they're, so we are, they're in the budget for next year.
Right.
So we have money for next year, and we have a little bit of money for the following year, so we have time to plan.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Trustee Lathan?
I appreciate your thoroughness, so thank you for the presentation. In terms of funds, for example, the question I asked about the $500,000 for a non-public or residential setting, when it comes to things like that, is there already a amount set aside in terms of we know that we're going to spend 15 million dollars on things like this, or are you, we pulling, like, how does that work?
So those are, when I say the budget's not static, that's a good example. So we do have money, an amount of money budgeted for contracts, let's say specifically for special ed. And we do it based on trends, and we talk with the special ed department to say, okay, where are kids going to be placed for the next year, and what kind of, what contracts are we going to have? So we don't have just a pot of money waiting for kids to go, but we, so we'll have to make adjustments. So we'll have to, you know, increase our services, but we might have to reduce our supplies or something like that. So that's a daily conversation that we have with all of our sites, specifically with routine repair and maintenance and special ed.
Perfect, thank you. And then President Hernandez, I wanted to know if I can, is connected, the question I have is connected to the budget, but it's regarding item 10M.
10M, yeah, I think that should be appropriate, or I think Ms. Robbins can figure out whether that's, at least she can answer or not.
All right, so it's probably best for Ms. Barb. I don't remember what the contract says for the non-residential facility for the student. And you said it's a 12th grader. Is that for next school year?
No.
So the student will be going to non-public, or they're already there?
Yes, it's a ratification, they're already there.
They're already, perfect, thank you.
Great, and then, oh yeah, Vice President Rocha?
You know, I'm concerned. I mean, it has nothing to do with us right now, but it is coming down. How are we going to deal with the nutrition part, food programs in the future if they are reduced? And how are we going to deal with special ed if the interest, I mean, the percentage doesn't come through? Are we looking ahead in the budget as to how to cover?
Well, as part of the multi-year, we do always, most often, put additional funds, specifically for special ed, a certain percentage to increase their budget, because theoretically, every year their budget does go up. I mean, the number that we use usually is based on trends, on, we look at how much we spent in different categories, specifically in special ed. Again, talking with the special ed department to see what information do we not know, like, something that I can't just see with the numbers. And so it's a continued conversation.
Okay, what about nutrition?
So since I've been at this district, I'm going to say Stephanie has done an amazing job, and I have not had as many in-depth conversations with her because she's been here so long that she really knows her budget very, very well, and she has, oh, can you go back, because this isn't working now? Go back, keep going. Can you go to, one more, one more, one more?
This is the Director of Nutrition Services?
Stephanie, yeah, Stephanie Simmering, yeah. And so you can see child nutrition, they have a pretty large ending fund balance, which is very, very unusual. Well, in most districts, you don't necessarily have that much. So she does manage it, she does a really good job of bidding for her products and sort of utilizing what the state offers, and so it's going to be a conversation, I mean, across the state, so.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I've just, it's been on my mind.
Yep.
Thank you.
Great, and then maybe I'll ask a few questions. We're on the right side for this. What's, just a definition question, the difference between something like capital outlay and deferred maintenance?
So capital outlay is basically for capital purchase. Deferred maintenance is basic, I mean, they could be interchanged, it's the, what revenue that's coming into them. So deferred maintenance is funds that come from, it used to be funded by the state, but with the LCFF, it went away. So it comes from the LCFF calculation, but is a contribution. And then capital outlay, the two sources of capital outlay, one is the mellorous or the community facilities districts, and that's the source of the revenue. But they can only be spent on capital improvements.
Got it, okay. Yeah, I think I was just wondering, because I feel like there could be things within either those that I think start to, like, edge a line, and I think really, because my main question next is, I know one of the decisions that we've made when it comes to finding ways to make up for the deficit is a zero contribution coming to deferred maintenance. And I guess I'm looking at how much we, like, spent on deferred maintenance this year versus, like, what our ending fund balance is at. And so I guess maybe I'm asking a question of what, for, like, expectation setting, I guess, like, what does that look like for us as a school district when we're having zero contributions there and then still have deferred maintenance needs? So, yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that you have to balance between what you, how you balance your general fund or your unrestricted and restricted versus that. But because we have the bond, so that was kind of, that's sort of the assumption sometimes, that if you don't need to contribute to deferred maintenance while you have the bond, but you would want to build it in, maybe not over the next two years, but maybe over the next five years, depending on if another bond passes. So a lot of the decision was made because we have a bond, and we're spending those money on the deferred maintenance.
Yeah, and that makes sense, and I think maybe the, to call out maybe the even more explicit question is, I think at times, there may have been either a sense or maybe even a little bit of communication that, like, some of the things, not including the bond, will be handled by deferred maintenance, but if we're, like, decreasing that, like, what can we say about, you know, expectations that people might have about that?
Yeah, so as part of the bond program and the overall plan that we had with the projects that need to be done, when I looked at the budget, I looked at what we were getting for the bond, and we also looked at these other categories that are, could be for facilities, which is Fund 14, deferred maintenance, Fund 25, developer fees. So developer fees is going to help offset the Orchard Park because it has to be for growth. So Orchard Park and John Mayer, so that's two other, that's two projects that this Fund 25 could help offset and not use all of bond funds. And then the same with Fund 40 and 49. So those, when I budgeted and made the big budget, I used those resources as well. And I assumed, when I used Fund 14, that we weren't going to contribute at some point because, you know, I kind of anticipated that.
Got it, yeah, no, thank you so much for that explanation. I think, you know, we just have so many needs in this school district, and there's, like, all these hard decisions we have to, I mean, I think we all would love to be able to give to all of the needs that our teachers have, but I think having the explicit conversation of why we're making some of these trade-offs, why some of these decisions or changes or fixes and improvements don't happen as quickly, or that we don't have the resources for them, or that we're having to think very strategically about those resources, I think is just something I wanted to kind of, like, spend a little bit of time getting my head kind of wrapped around so that we can kind of explain that better as a board, because I think it's so easy to hear that, like, hey, we have this great big bond that we just got, but why is this not happening? Why is that not happening? And how have we been making decisions and thinking about those needs and really trying to meet the most pressing needs as often and as quickly as we can? Yes, trustee Lathan?
If you want to finish, go ahead, and then I'll ask the question when I get done.
Got it. Oh, is it related to this, because maybe, because I'm done kind of with this topic? So yeah, go ahead, trustee Lathan.
So it just kind of sparked a question for me. I know that we talked last school year about an increase in, so new housing developments in our city. And the thought at the time was, we don't necessarily need to build a new school because some of those students would be able to go to neighboring schools or schools that are close. And I don't know if we're still in that same place, considering we do have an increase in student enrollment, which is so good. And in addition to that, you're talking about, we're talking about opening up more TK classrooms. So we might not have an answer today, but just know that's been something on my mind, like, do we need to start thinking about a new facility, or do we think that even when we have a new community or a couple of new communities, those students will still be able to fit comfortably or be comfortably in our school? So that's just something on my mind.
Great, yeah, so I guess to go on to the two remaining questions I have, so when we're looking at something like, if you want to go to slide 10, the restricted ending fund balance, the items that we have there, those are multi-year items as well, right? So something like the expanded learning opportunities, I think you read the right one.
Yeah, so this is the same thing on the other slide, but this shows you the multi-year.
Got it. No, I think I just want to clarify that when we're looking at, like, our ending fund balance, that that's not an ending fund balance for, like, our fiscal year, but a multi-year ending fund balance, or not multi-year, but, you know, like, a balance that's going to carry on to, like, additional years and not just this representation of, like, money that we didn't spend this year, but also represents money that is going to be spent in the future.
Yeah, so for example, the learning recovery, we have 9 million that we're carrying over at the end of this year, and then we'll be carrying over 1.5 million next year.
Got it.
Same with the expanded learning opportunities, we're carrying over 14 million each year. We're spending, we're about a year behind with the way that the state funds us to spend it. So yes, good point.
Perfect. And then the last question is kind of a broader question when it comes to some of, like, our federal funding and the current context of, like, the country. So my understanding is that even if something like the Department of Education at the federal level goes away, that, especially because all of our Title I funding, it's mostly Title I funding, that that should shift over to state control and essentially will be funding that we still will continue to have and really shouldn't be under threat. But is there any other implications that we, that you all are thinking about or that we need to be thinking about when it comes to federal dollars? Is there a risk of us losing some of those federal dollars? Or any insight as to that? And I know that's a big question.
Yeah, so at this time and in this interim report, it assumes that we're going to get the federal, all the federal dollars that we've been receiving. I just had a CBO meeting at the county, so it was all CBos in Contra Costa County, and the information we got was, at this time, there's no changes. So I'm sticking with that.
Great, okay.
But we definitely continue to monitor that.
Yeah, definitely, yeah. But I think, yeah, I think I just want to also call that out, because I think it's a really, it's a subject that people, I think, are paying a lot of attention to that is maybe hard to find good information, as to what are the actual funding implications and that. There are concerns there, but I think funding-wise, we are okay.
It's too premature to make any adjustments now, but we definitely need to watch.
Any additional questions that maybe came up during that? Otherwise, I think I just want to say, you know, thank you to you and the rest of the finance team for this. I think there's just, you all are doing such great work when it comes to balancing the concept of, like, having to fill a deficit, yet we have such great projects coming, and how do we navigate those parts and pieces and make those decisions? So I really appreciate all the work that you're doing and the very thoughtfulness that's going into the way that our budget is shaping.
Yes, and thank you, because I should have acknowledged Mia, and thank you very much, because she works really hard, and then she supports me every time I do an interim, so I appreciate you, Mia.
Great, thank you. Moving on now to 11B disclosure, actually, what we have to accept, you're right, you're right, you're right, sorry. And then, so we do need, I'll entertain a motion to approve the second interim report.
A motion, I make a move to approve.
Second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the 2024-25 second interim report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no, and the motion passes. Great, moving on to 11B disclosure and ratification of the tentative agreement between Antioch Unified School District and Antioch Education Association for 2024-25. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Martinez.
Yes, good evening, Board President Hernandez, Vice President Rocha, the remaining board members. We're pleased tonight to bring you three different documents that you'll be approving, hopefully, in succession. This work really belongs to the team, the team of negotiators who represent the district in working with our two unions directly. And I just wanted to call out before I gave you the final information here, John Jimno, Heather Ogden, Liz Robbins, Carrie Wells, Mia Consio, and a couple of our classified folks, De'Twon Bunton and Jackie Cortez, who really worked with me. This is a team effort of working together with our unions for negotiation purposes. In each one of our unions, we're completing the third year of the successor agreements. Usually, you have a contract that is approved for three full years, but within each of those years, you have items that you can bring back and continue for the next year. That oftentimes includes salary and benefits, and you get to choose some items. So tonight, the first documents that you have in front of you are the ratification documents for the agreements that the district has reached with the Antioch Education Association. Those agreements are specific this year to salary and for the area of, let me make sure and get it, our overall salary schedules and class sizes. So the documents reflect many hours of work that go into conversations, again, representing the board in those negotiation sessions, where we work to arrive at language that would actually change the contract purposes, again, protecting the integrity of the education, given the goals of the board, and working with our employee association as they represent all of the members of their unit. And for the certificated side, that's over 890 individuals that they represent. So the other remaining documents also are the signed disclosure agreements. For every one of our agreements that we have, the process of AB 1200 denotes that we have to disclose to the public what is this cost. And so the documents go through a detailed analysis that's performed by the business office, where, again, the current superintendent, the business official sign off that we can afford these things under the board's direction. So we have those approvals for you, and in fact, because we're doing some great work, we have updated salary schedules as well. So again, we bring this entire packet to you first for AEA, that is reflective of the work, but really will lead us to catching everyone up for the 24-25 school year, and it provides direction as well for next school year, our starting salaries. So as we're doing recruitment right now, we use that information to bring more people to the district. And I leave it to you for any questions or for your approval.
Unless there's any questions, yes, trustee Lathan?
I don't have a question as much as it is just an acknowledgement of the designated subject credential, so all the salary schedules have increased. But when I looked at the CTE credential or the designated subject credential, I was very pleased. It can be really challenging to get CTE teachers, especially if you're experienced in your field and you go from making six figures to wanting to teach high school, like, you're not going to probably quit your job for that, right? And I don't think that we're there yet, but I think we're doing a really good job. There's like a $10,000 bump for the first column, and so I just wanted to commend you all for that, because I think that will bring us more stability in our CTE courses. Thank you.
Of course.
And thank us, the board.
Yes.
Great, so I'm looking So I'm looking for a motion to approve the tentative agreement.
I move to approve.
Great. So it's properly moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to ratify the tentative agreement between Antioch Unified School District and the Antioch Education Association for a contract term of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item C, disclosure and ratification of the tentative agreement and memorandum of understanding between California School Employees Association and its Chapter 85 and the Antioch Unified School District for the 2024-2025 school year. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Martinez.
And again, much of the same information applies here, but I will add that with our CSCA folks, we have crafted good language and improving language for our leave process. So that when classified employees do have to take leaves, there's a more exact process that will be tracking those documents and tracking the leaves, working with employees. There are many leave protections within the state of California and in, in concurrence with federal law as well. So we want to make sure that everybody has that information. But then we also work with our employees to make sure that they're accountable for reporting with us as we're providing those protections to them. Further, we have advanced the grievance article. And you sometimes think, well, what does a grievance article do? Well, it really helps us solve problems at the lowest possible level. And we wanted to clarify that because we envision our labor representatives for CSCA working with our site administrators if there are concerns that have a contractual nature, that we really provide guidance for them to be able to work on those issues at the lowest possible level. And then if need be, we can involve other people, but there's a clear process. So again, the language improves our overall working with CSCA. We think it's something that will be very beneficial. And we've again added the 1.5 salary increase. I will add one little thing that we did do is we added a PhD doctorate stipend to our classified folks. We actually do have an individual who has that. And again, we're going to continue working on the professional growth models so that our classified folks will continue to advance their skills and find some benefit for that. So there we are with CSCA.
And then I guess I'd also just want to emphasize, maybe if you want to add a tiny bit more context of the memorandum of understanding, as I know that we had several employees come at our last meeting and advocate for that.
Right. We had actually been having this conversation for a while. But again, as we concluded that official negotiation round, we were able to quickly get together and modify a process for that our, some of our lowest paid classified workers are being able to be elevated. There was good rationale behind that. And as Liz has mentioned, our classified fund, our, our child nutrition services fund is separate from the main district budget and we can handle that type of increase. And so it's a very positive thing for us to elevate the pay for our employees. We want to keep them working. Some of them work just a couple of hours there and a couple of hours there. So if they're really dedicating that time to us, we want to make sure and reciprocate that with a higher salary. It's a very positive thing. Thank you.
Any questions? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the tentative agreement and the memorandum of understanding.
Move approval.
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to ratify the tentative agreement and memorandum of understanding between Antioch Unified School District and the California School Employees, Employees Association for the 2024-2025 school year as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. And then moving on to D, disclosure and approval of salary schedule adjustments for the Antioch Management Association, certified classified management and senior management. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Martinez.
Thank you. And again, our AMA, the Antioch Management Association, is not necessarily a union at all. They are what they call a meet and confer group. They are an established organization because we used, we do need to have uniform salary structures that pay individuals an appropriate amount. But they are not a union overseen by PERB. However, through the process, it's called meet and confer. We don't have an actual contract, but in the process of working again with the board, with them, it was determined that this group should also receive the 1.5% salary increase. So again, the public disclosures are included here for review. The Antioch Management Association does make up our classified supervisors in addition to certificated administrators throughout the district. And it's all encompassing. So we ask for your approval of that process as well.
Great. So unless there's any questions, again, I'll entertain a motion to approve the item.
I move approval.
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the increases in compensation for employees within the AMA on the certified classified management and senior management salary schedule as described. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Next, we have item E, stipulated expulsion number 864. This is the public portion of the closed session item. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the stipulated expulsion as presented.
I make a motion to approve.
Great. So it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve stipulated expulsion number 864 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Next, we're at 12. Items for information, discussion, and action by board. We have item A, Superintendent Search Services and Goal Development Consultation Services. So we'll welcome up our Superintendent Search Team.
I'm excited. I was hoping I'd get a paper copy.
Thank you so much.
All right. Good evening. How are we doing?
Good evening. Good. Happy to have you here in person this time.
Yeah, we're good. Good to see you. Dr. Dan and I are here today, represent Dan, we're like, Morey, we call him Dr. Dan. We're here representing McPherson and Jacobson. We are missing one of our teammates who's out of the country, Bill Spalding. But he, I don't even think he's able to join in from, because he's across the country and kind of tease him. I mean, I work with a lot of retirees and so they live their best life while still working, so I'm going to forgive them. But want to just take a moment to acknowledge you as the team, the staff, the community. Just recognizing in the last couple of weeks, months, I didn't say years, been really hard for educators in the landscape. So I just want to pause and just acknowledge that. Because it's been very heavy. And so we have the distinct pleasure of working with lots of districts around the state. And it's just been heavy for people. So I just want to acknowledge the humans in the room and across your district, your children, your families, community, because it's just, I recognize that this is a tough time in education. So I just want to say that. And as a consultant, I experienced that same thing working with so many. So I just want to thank you for allowing us to partner with you on the superintendent search process. Want to give you just a quick update, see what questions you have. We'll continue to check in with each of you. I think we're playing phone tags. We're going to figure this out so we can connect as well. But where we are in the process, I'm really excited with regards to the piece where we're going to, I'm going to start with the calendar first, just where you are with regards to the dates. We're really on track, right, with what we scheduled to do. We'll talk in a moment about our input process we got from your stakeholders. Really appreciate that. We've spent a couple of weeks in your schools, talking to people. So we'll talk a little bit about the report in a moment. I want to also acknowledge a big shout out to Maya, who has been very, very helpful and just herding the cats, right? Keeping us together and informed. I, I do want to publicly say we've done a lot of searches and so you have definitely been an amazing point of contact. So thank you. It makes a difference in the search process. So we know that the applications will be closing March 27th. As of right now, we have 16 applicants, which is actually pretty high for this time. Typically, our applications start to come in the last minute, maybe 24 to 48 hours, where we get quite a number. So I have no idea what that number will be, but we definitely are excited. You have some quality candidates who have applied already and we expect many more, whether it's internal, external, but we're just honored again and have responded to a lot of inquiry about your district because it's very attractive. And people have, you know, asked about the process. So we continue to reiterate that, you know, it's open and fair and transparent and that people are excited about the, the possibilities. I just want you to at least know that as you're, you know, going through this important process of hiring your one employee. With regards to our advertisement, so I know I've sent you the communication about all the platforms you've been advertising and so that's been getting some great traction. We have one more conference we'll be attending next week, the CASA Conference, California Association of African American Superintendents and Administrators. So that's one of the last conferences, like in person, where we can physically, like, you know, interact with folks. We've gone to AXA, Soup Symposium, you name it, CSBA. We've been at numerous conferences, so we're super excited about that. I did bring some extra copies of the brochure. If you want to see it, you might recall you saw the electronic version, but we brought a hard copy just so you see what's been given to people. So if you want that, Dr., you want to just hand that to them, just so they have at least a, a copy in hand. Just so you see the advertisement that also has gone out, but it's been on Edjoin, LinkedIn, you name it. It's been everywhere. So we just appreciate that. With regards to next steps on the calendar, we will see you on April the 8th. And I believe we have tentatively scheduled, starting at four o'clock and potentially ending at nine or eight or seven. It just depends on how fast that goes. We don't know how many applicants you'll have. But on that date, that's a special closed session meeting. We'll go through all the applications. We'll send you pre-work so you can have time to actually look at them ahead of time, so it doesn't take as long. That will include what we call a pre-screening interview. So we will, let's just say, for example, let's just say we have 30 applications. I'm just making that number up. What Dr. Dan and Bill and I will do is screen through based on your criteria and we'll try to shorten that down to what we call a shortlist, which is about 10 people usually, maybe 12. And what we do is we have them do a pre-screening interview. So you'll actually get to see people ahead of your actual time with us on April 8th. So you'll get to also have that kind of insight on who you may want to decide on the 8th, who you actually want to interview in person. So that will happen. And that's why it's important that you do all your pre-work prior to the 8th. And then that meeting is typically long because we go through every applicant. So if it was 30 applicants, we're going to go through each one. But what we don't do is we don't spend a lot of time on all of the details. Because remember, we are spending hours and days and weeks, you know, doing this, and that's why you hired us. So what we'll do is go through the process of who was not really selected on the shortlist. Just tell you why. And because it could be simple things like where they were not qualified, you name it. So we'll go through that. Then we'll spend most of the time on the shortlist. And then you all decide who's going to be your actual folks who interview on, what do we have, May? Yeah, May 1st and 2nd. Yes, yes, which is Thursday, Friday. So Maya and I have also connected about your interview location, just to confirm that. And we'll know on April 8th, how many you will then interview. And then that will help us know like what the schedule might be as well. So we'll go through that. We'll go through picking the questions and just really finalizing everything so you'll get ready for the interview. Okay? So I'm going to pause for a moment and see if there's any questions you may have. Well, and let me back up. One other thing on your calendar, and we'll talk about in a little bit, is April 16th, which is another regular board meeting. And that's where you'll do your ad hoc appointment of those that are going to be on the interview panel as stakeholders. Okay? Because that has to be done in a regular board meeting. So that's your other item that's on the calendar, April 16. Okay? And we'll talk a little bit about that process in a moment, see what questions you have. And then of course, May 1st and 2nd will be the actual interviews. Okay? So remember, don't schedule anything, no weddings, no birthday parties, no, no vacation. Like, we need you the whole time, all five of you. And it is, it's a lot, but it's going to be well worth it. So questions about the calendar? And Dr. Did I forget anything? Okay. Any questions about the calendar?
Confirm. Three dates that you mentioned, May 1st, May 2nd are the interview dates. And May 16th, which is the regular board meeting, is to, for us to identify the stakeholders for the panels.
So let's back up. So April 8th is when we're doing, we're going to meet with you all to go through the applications, right? That's closed session. April 16 is when you all appoint your stakeholder panel.
Okay, thank you.
Right. And then May 1 and 2 is your actual interviews. And then you actually will go through, and once you pick your finalists, of course, you'll have your negotiations around contract. And then you'll actually appoint them or approve that contract on your regular board meeting, May 21, if all goes as planned. Yeah.
Do we already have a time scheduled for the 8th?
For April 8th. So 4:00 PM is what we initially put on this original schedule. And we put tentative because it does, you know, now that we're closer, you may have a better idea. But it does take, you know, between three and five hours. So that's why we, I think you all said four o'clock might have worked for you at the time, but I do want to get some confirmation because it is coming pretty closely. So if you all want to give a good sense of is four o'clock going to work to get started? And then again, it's, it's, it's a pretty long meeting, depending on how much discussion you all have. So how are y'all feeling about the timeframe of 4:00 PM?
I'm open on the 8th, so any time will work for me.
Yeah, okay. And if we get closer and there's some small adjustment around, like, hey, we need to start at 4:30 or 5:00, you know, those are things we can adjust because we know that there may be some, you know, maybe something that comes up because we know everyone has, you know, other things they're doing in their day lives, right? But we do need to confirm as soon as possible because I know Maya also has to, you know, make provisions for you as well. And we'll be here, you know, regardless, but sounds like April 8th, 4:00 PM is our next date. All right, perfect. All right. Yeah, any other questions about the calendar? All right. So one piece that I did want to just kind of add into the conversation, which is not necessarily our responsibility, but we know that you have vacancy in the chief HR position. And I believe someone decided to go live their best life and retire. So I'll give you a hard time about that later, but congratulations. And, but I know there was also kind of a question about, okay, the timing of it, where does that fit with the search process? Now, we are obviously not conducting that process. You typically have an HR process of hiring a position, right? What we did give kind of a recommendation about is to, because it is a significant cabinet position, typically a superintendent, that's their role to hire that person. That's good governance, right? The board does not make that decision. You just give guidance through your policy about, through personnel, through the hiring framework. So one of the things we recommended is that while you don't, you do have, you know, it's kind of urgent that you fill the position, but you have an acting position, person in that position. So you have that responsibility being taken care of. However, to have a permanent position, what we would recommend is that you allow the superintendent search process to play out so that allows whoever your superintendent will be to actually have a, a role in that process, since that will be a significant person on their cabinet. So what that would mean is if you're going to appoint or approve the contract on May 21st, what that would mean is most likely you would hold interviews for that position after that time. So that allows that person officially be approved, because that's important. And then also it allows maybe some transition time, depending on what role they're in, you, you name it. But it's just, it's often we say that's the fair thing to do. And I think based on the timing right now, it should align pretty well. We didn't see in our team any problem, right, with that, with kind of waiting and not rushing through it. Especially because you have an acting, someone playing that acting role, if that makes sense. So that's sometimes very typical. But want to make sure there was no questions about that process and knowing our role is doing the hiring, supporting you as superintendent. But I know that is a process you have to consider. So any questions on that?
And my understanding is that's the current intended process, what you just described.
Perfect, perfect. Okay. And if there are any questions along the way, let us know because this is not an uncommon, like dilemma, if that makes sense based on timing. Okay? And so in our next space, what we want to talk about is our stakeholder input report. And so just kind of giving you an overview again of the process. So part of us kind of going through really better understanding how to recruit, what may be the best fit for your district. We want to hear from your community and know that was important for you. So Dr. Dan and I and Bill also spent a couple of weeks online, talking to people individually, spending time with your students. Again, thank you for setting that up, Maya. That was, no offense to the adults, that was one of the best experiences, right? It's just visiting the schools, talking to your students who have some amazing things to share. And so what we're going to do today is go through the actual report in terms of just a quick overview of the executive summary, which is really the theme. So we'll do that in a moment. I want to acknowledge though, one particular error that may have also caused like a little bit of discomfort and concern around the categories that were shared in the report. And so one of the things that happened is one of the categories that did not include the correct title with regards to administrators, where their site and district administrators kind of combined. And so there was a category that wasn't listed correctly. And so it may appear that there was a group, that was the only group as part of that, and that was incorrect. So we want to apologize, one, because that, the error. So we'll correct that error and make sure we give you the reposted version. And then also want to apologize to anyone who felt like that was not, that was not the representation of them and it could cause any discomfort or concern. So we want to say that as well. Okay? The point of the report though is to share people's truth. So we did redact. So we did redact, we went through and redacted names, positions, any kind of attack that might have happened, you know, towards any position, um, to just really protect, um, people from that, because that's not the purpose of the report. It is not designed to cause people to feel attacked or to feel, um, unsafe, but it is, it is really an idea of allowing you all to see the things that are really powerful about your community, right, that is attractive, and kind of a reminder, when it's hard times, it's a good reminder of what's good about your community and your district. Things you may have not even been aware that people value. And then also, as question three shares, like, what are the issues that this person should be aware of, and not that it's an indication or definition of your district, but absolutely that there are some things that different versions of your, your community feel about the, uh, the, um, um, the district, in particular, it might be concerns, questions, wonderings, but also issues that may be near and dear to someone. And then, of course, the last piece is just, like, what do people want to see in the next superintendent? And so, Dr. Dan, um, and I are gonna kind of tag-team a little bit, um, and so, Dr. Dan, if you want to kind of go through the executive summary for a moment, and then I'll give a little more context and see if you have any questions, uh, but we don't, we're not gonna go through the whole report, we know it's long, and that just indicates that there were a lot of people gave feedback. You had over four hundred people, which is actually pretty good. It's about three percent of your student population, when we look at it, and the goal is to get anywhere between three and five percent. So we're really excited that we got that, and you had a significant number of students, which was also important. So I'm gonna have Dr. Dan kind of share a little bit, see what questions you have, and then we'll talk about your stakeholder interview panel after that, okay?
You want me to start with this one, too? Executive summary?
Just the, yeah.
I'll do one? I'll do one?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
And then, uh, the numbers, yeah.
All right, well, we enjoyed meeting you, almost your entire community. As you see on the executive summary, we've, uh, contacted or reached or got information from four hundred and twenty-nine, uh, folks, some of that being on, uh, line, some of that being, uh, yes, all online, some of it being face-to-face. Have the four questions there, that we asked each and every group, it was, we were consistent about that, and diligently recording what they have. From all of the information for each of the questions, we went through all of the, we got, and identified what seems to be a theme, uh, popping up left and right. And so the first few pages of this report are, in fact, those major themes. So if you turn the page and look at number one, where we asked about, tell us the good things about your community, you'll see that there are several here. The first one, and the one that seemed to come across the strongest, was about diversity. Um, and people ta- talked a lot about how rich, uh, that diversity is, and the, um, and how it, uh, highlights our, your community. Now, what you see below diversity are just a few samples of what ca- is in the actual report, that's where those other bullets are. The second one is location and the activities that are close by. You know, not living far from here, I didn't realize some of the things that are right here. I'm gonna have to pu- pack up my bike and bring it over. But, uh, in fact, folks talked a lot about, you know, some of the recreational things. Shopping came up a lot, okay? And, uh, then there's a lot of resources for the families. The third major theme in this category is the sense of community. Some folks still had that feeling of a small town, even though you're growing, they said there's still an element of the small-town community, and, uh, what they liked is how you, uh, celebrate and appreciate the history that's here. The next one are the people. Uh, this, uh, community is apparently very generational. People have been here for quite a while, and so, uh, that ha- helps with the small-town feel and what have you. Um, and there's a certain amount of pride in the community. Yes, and later on, people told us about what's going on, but overall, they feel very proud of, uh, this community here. And then the last one in this, uh, particular question, is that, uh, they, the extended community, this is not from the school people necessarily, but the school community and the youth in, in this community, they felt is a very positive, uh, uh, feeling for them. And they did feel that, uh, one of the things that came up was how clean your schools are. You know, and that really is an important thing, you know? Having been a superintendent, I walk on a campus, and it's like, hold on, who's been here? Who hasn't been here? It really does make an impression on, on there, and I'm sure all of the candidates will be touring your community, and that's one of the things to look at, is what do the front of the schools look like as they drive by? Um, and, uh, well, the parents seeking opportunities, and there were a lot of opportunities for the students in, uh, your community. Those were the major themes that we got from the first question. Any question about the question? Want to do number two? Oh, keep going? Oh, okay. So the second question is, tell us what is good about the district and the schools. Once again, diversity came up in a variety of ways, but also diversity of programs. What you have going on, the CTE programs, things like that, really have, uh, attracted people here. They, they like that, and they, they want more of it. And then, what they appreciated about that was that the students have many options. Ah, dry mouth. Uh, they have many options, they can make choices here. The next theme is a dedicated, hard-working staff, and they talked about that both as the classified folks, as well as their certificated folks, and they really appreciated, thank you, I appreciate that, too. Uh, but they really appreciate the, uh, the, the way folks are working around here. And there, I guess, are quite a few of the administrative staff and teaching staff, I think we really heard this from the teaching staff, who actually live here in the community. Um, and so, that's, was a strong piece. And then, is the support for students. There is support within the schools for your students, and there is concern for the well-being of both the students and the staff, and, uh, that came out over and over. And then the last theme on this one is resources and services. And, uh, it's interesting, you see the first bullet, this is not something usually people outside of the school system recognize, but your community did, and that's the practices being used, um, the restorative practices being used throughout the district. They really appreciate that for your students. Uh, strong, uh, efforts to engage parent participation, uh, they, they like that, and they want more of it. So, uh, you'll see that in a little later. Those are the four major themes for number two. Questions? You want to take the next one?
You're doing fine, but I-
Oh, okay, I'll do, okay. So number three is, tell us what the issues are. And this is the one that really, uh, gets a lot of, um, attention. Hope I should, if you flip the page, there are two more for what's good about the school district. Understand special education, and, no, wait a minute, I'm sorry, flipping pages. They're sticking together. Okay, no, forget what I just said. Um, so what are the, uh, issues a new superintendent should know about in this community? And you see, there are a number of them, and, uh, it was interesting, um, the way people told us about some of these, you know, there's some people were very emphatic, and some people just kind of mentioned it. But one of the things is, is that while your community is diverse, there's a feeling that there's not a sense of inclusion, inclusion of everybody, which is, um, kind of intriguing, because they appreciate the diversity, yet there's many of them who don't feel included. Trust needs to be rebuilt. I think, uh, most recently, there's some of the things that the district has gone through, kind of erodes the trust, and that, what they want right away is trust, and you'll see that comes out more and more. The next one is academic rigor lacking. Um, they identified that, and we're talking again, all parts of your community saw that over and over again, that there needs to be a little more rigor in what you're giving to students. Uh, you notice the first bullet there, as many students are being passed along academically, and that was really a sore spot for folks in your community. And then, staff accountability is lacking. You know, hold people accountable for the jobs that they're to do, and this goes across the board, i- it's administrators, it's teachers, it's your classified folks, it's not any one, uh, group of folks, they would like to see it all around. And what's interesting is, some of your employees said this also. So it came up more than once, from a variety here. Uh, then, uh, the special education department and the services from there, there seems to be a breakdown, particularly in communication, and, uh, the timeliness of placing students, once they've been assessed, when do they get into the programs they need? And, uh, that became an issue, and it came up, I was surprised at how many times it came up, quite frankly. And then the last one, yes, uh, community in need of healing, you know, that goes to the trust piece, it goes to all that, and it's, uh, again, we got a combination of what's happening in the district and what's happening in your community. And, uh, that one, I think, is focused around the combination of those two. And so they're really, and you'll hear in just a few moments, they're really looking for somebody who can come in and help heal us, uh, make us feel better. Now... I should point out that we do these reports every time, and there's not a district that has a clean slate here. So you're not alone in some of these issues. So they vary from time to time, but every district has blemishes. And that's part of what your next superintendent, yet working with you, gets to try to clean up. I think one of the beauties of this report is that when you do have your next superintendent, this is something you can refer to and say, we need to pay attention to this. So... Any questions before I move on to the last question? Here e'en none. So what are the characteristics, attributes, and skills the new superintendent should have? Well, this goes to the last piece I just spoke, build relationships. Build relationships within the district and with the community. You know, it, it, it's interesting, because again, in all the, the ones I conducted, there was that sense, there was the school district, and there was the community. And what this is talking about, let's bring them together. We need to be all together, and we can work better, which brings the next one, is having a co- a collaborative leader. Collaboration with the staff and the city. You know, the, again, there's a sense of, um, there's the district, and there's the school sites. We should be all together. Um, then there's the district, and there's the city. We should all be together, and that's what came out over and over. A leader with strong ethics and integrity. You know, and that's, um, that's an important one, and what they want is a lot of transparency, and a person who makes decisions from an ethical point of view. You know, tough decisions have to be made, but if they're transparent and can explain why they're making the decision that way, that's what your community wants. Once again, holding everybody accountable. The new superintendent needs to lead that parade, uh, as we go through, and it's interesting, that came up in the issues, and it comes up in one of the char- as one of the characteristics your community's saying we want in our next superintendent. A communicator and a listener. Somebody who is articulate and can express what needs to be expressed, so that everybody understands it. Doesn't just hang out in, uh, schoolies, uh, but in fact, is talking the language everybody can u- understand, and, um, listen. And, and what we've heard, particularly from schoolsite people, just come to our site, and that'll pop up in just a moment, but come to our site and sit down and listen to what we have to say. That's what they're, they're asking for. And then, understand the school community, and that goes again to what I said a few moments ago, there seems to be this feeling as there's the district and there's the school sites. And so there's a lack of understanding what we at the school sites really need and want. And then there's two more, I believe, if you flip the page, uh, understand special education. As I said, this came up quite a few times, and, uh, folks are really wanting to clean that up. Um, they have a sense that people don't know how that's funded, and, uh, in fact, are they spending the money the way that they should be spending? And hopefully, they have some sort of special ed background. And then the last one is be visible. Want to see the superintendent in the schools and in the community. And they even said, in the community, participating in some of the community events. Uh, but they really wanted him in the school. Those are the, the major themes that came out. Any questions that I may answer?
Yeah, I think you may have already said this, but it are, is the order of these, does that have anything to say, like, is there a higher priority or less priority, or they're just kind of just all themes that were just kept up?
It was themes that kept coming up.
Got it, okay. Any other questions?
Now, remember, we're going through four hundred and something responses and trying to figure this out, so order was different. Okay?
Thanks, Dr. Dan. Um, one just additional piece about themes. So remember, there was also the online survey. So although these themes include, um, um, they were the major themes, they were both when we interviewed people and online surveys. So if you go towards the end of the report, you'll see that there's also another theme, and I'm not gonna go through those, but I just want to make sure you can see, there were themes from the online responses, too, and you can even see the percentages there of who gave, um, input online. And there's a couple other ways that this particular, um, survey also allows for you to look at, um, kind of a ranking of certain areas based on what, what the community thought. So just interesting to look at, like, on your own time, just to see, um, just gives you another kind of analysis, but overall, um, just to give you a sense, um, we've been doing this for a while, and sometimes it's really pretty powerful to just hear the community. So I just want to appreciate you for that, but also, sometimes it can be a little tough, right, to hear some things, but also it gives you a lot of information about where you want to really think about, I'm hiring our next superintendent, what are the things that need to be addressed, that you may not be aware of as a board, right, because you don't get to be in the trenches with everyone all the time, so it's very helpful. And then also, for the community to have an opportunity to speak their truth, and just to remind you, some people didn't speak their truth. So this is not a, a definition of your entire district. Um, there, this is an ongoing process, we hope that you'll continue to do in general, so, yes.
Thank you, um, for sharing, Dr. Dan and, um, Ms. Anderson. Um, what I appreciate about the report, besides it's well-done and easy to read, thank you for the beginning, you know, the, the themes upfront, um, but also that, for the board, just know that it's also aligned to other reports that we have. For example, Equity Report revealed that we need, um, to increase rigor, see students as scholars. I mean, like, what's in here is consistent, um, with some other reports that we have, our LCAP, so just, I'm just really, um, impressed that at least there's consistency in our community about what's needed, um, and so that is not all over the place, but, like, we have some real focus areas, so thank you.
Powerful, thank you.
And just to clarify, the major themes, um, that we got sent here, does that include information from those online responses?
Yes.
Or are those distinctly separate?
It's all, yeah, all.
Got it, okay.
But, but the online responses also has its own, kind of like the system itself, kind of, we added some things in, in the last couple of years, just to add another layer of theme, so you'll see that, but those at the bottom are only for the online ones, so, yeah. Yeah, good question. Any final questions? All right, so just again, next steps with this, just acknowledging the error that we'll, um, address around the categories, because they indicate, again, there was, um, one category, again, it did said, I think, ed services, leaders, and it actually should be district and site leaders combined, is what the actual responses you see, but the category is incorrect. So I want to make sure you know that. We'll reshare that with Maya to make sure the correct, um, title is posted, and, um, if you have any further questions regarding that error, just let, let us know, and we'll also make sure we talk to the home office about, just making sure if there's any fee associated with it, maybe we reduce it due to the error. Um, yes.
Also noticed, when I was looking through the data, um, that there is a disconnect between, um, the district office and, uh, let's say, you know, teachers and classified, it was just a notice I, noticing I had, that district-level, um, administrators and site principals typically have a different view of our, our district, um, that I saw a lot of, um, everything is great, uh, we're doing this, we're doing that, and then, the more we go to teachers, classified staff, students, parents, it starts diminishing.
Yep.
So somehow, we need to make a connection between...
Yeah.
Um, what's happening at the district office, all the way to custodians, in terms of, how are we all seeing this, and how are we listening to each other? So I just wanted to make that, uh, uh, make that acknowledgement, that I saw that in a pattern across our district.
Yeah, and it's no indictment on anyone. I think one of the things you have to realize, whenever you have a time of change and transition and challenges, right, um, that, I call it connecting the dots, sometimes that does, there is a disconnect. So I do think, I love that you said, but I noticed how people really highlighted the great things going on, and that's what we got to see, too. So that's why, what we love about this is, sometimes we don't have those conversations, and, and this kind of bridges it, but also, you know, shows us- and this kind of bridges it, but also, you know, shows us how we got work to do. We just got to be better at communication, collaboration, which is, again, Dr. Dan said, you are no different from any districts we get to do this with. So it's just part of our area of growth, right, and opportunity. So I just appreciate you seeing that as well. And I think with having a permanent superintendent, that will be kind of the catalyst for how that can happen, along with the restoration, kind of healing that needs to take place with the human being, so. Yeah, so I appreciate you saying that.
Vice President Rocha. In the amount of parents that we have and that you interviewed, can you tell me more or less, percentage wise, did we get enough of a percentage of the Spanish-speaking population?
Yeah, good question. So, and remember, I'm glad you brought that up. So we had three languages you all asked to do, so it was English, Mandarin and Spanish. And actually, besides the D-LAC meeting, which there was a good number, a great number of folks who came, I would say, from an individual standpoint, and even on the survey, you didn't see a lot of Spanish-speaking families. So I'm glad you brought it up, because one of the things that that tells us is, you know, do we wonder, like, okay, as far as outreach, right, is one piece, and then two is, do people feel comfortable sharing their truth? Or, you know, just are they even aware that there's an opportunity to share their voice? So that definitely was something we noticed too. Wasn't a large number outside of the D-LAC setting, so.
Well, I was a little concerned, because I was at the D-LAC meeting, and wasn't very happy with the interviewing that took place. And I wondered how else were you going to reach them, because when you did do it, you did it in English language rather than Spanish.
Yeah, so I wasn't a part of that particular meeting, but I know that I did do a debriefing about that. And so part of it with the large number and trying to do it on the, not Zoom, but our Teams, I believe, was probably not the best platform for that, so I will say that. We did offer a couple of other opportunities for people to come on, and so I think in those spaces, when you don't have that engagement, it tells us, okay, we do need to rethink how to do that outreach. So we will say, that wasn't the best platform to do so, but we will say, the online survey, having access to that, and again, multiple sessions where we've given opportunities to come. There were a couple of, I think, community sessions where we didn't have a lot of people come and join us, which is not uncommon. And so we give the opportunity, but if people don't come, it's hard for us to kind of assess the why. So, yeah, I know you.
Well, my sadness to me, and I blame myself, in a sense, but we do have two large ones. One is at Fremont Elementary and one is at Marsh. Maybe going there to their meeting would have been a better situation. I didn't think about it. I didn't bring it to you, so it's not your fault. I'm trying to say that I'm sorry that I didn't quite get the gip of it to make sure we had our parents involved.
What was provided for us on one of the sessions, I know, I had somebody on the screen who never talked, and I said, do you have, I'm here to translate. And so we had, and the district provided that, so there was some translator online.
Yeah, and just one follow-up.
And so I will say, even though we finished the process, we're fine if that is actually a thought that you'd want to have around just going to those two schools. Like, we can make that effort to do so. It may not show up particularly here, but it can be something we share with you in our next time together, if we want to just go visit those two schools. I know that usually there's a standing meeting for D-LAC, but if it's something where the schools say, hey, we want to, you know, pull our families together to do a community listening session, you name it, it's something we'll work with you on. So, yeah, yeah, for the two schools, so.
Just for clarity, in regards to the part where it talks about district and staff not being connected, was that included with the board? Or is there anything in this report where they spoke about having the board members being a little bit more involved with connection, or is any expectations from the board members itself, or is that all included with the district?
Well, there was one comment, they thought you should be perfect and walk on water, no. No, there wasn't, y'all were like, huh? So, so there weren't a lot of comments about board, per se. And part of it is because your roles are a little different. And so I think that in terms of what was an expectation of you, there weren't anything that came up to say about the disconnect of school. Now, I will say this, is that being present at schools and really being involved is something that I think is definitely something people share, you know, but not necessarily specific to individual board members as a whole. So as you kind of read through it, you may find little pieces where the board may be referenced, but nothing that I recall that would be about bridging the connections, per se. And part of the reason why is, this is the superintendent search, so what you'll find, even with the issues question, is a lot of that will be focused on the superintendent's role, because that's what we're really here for. So you don't usually hear as much about the board in this space, yeah.
I will say, I had one comment that talked about the board and the superintendent, and the way they needed to be transparent with each other and communicate with each other. But that only came up once, and that's why you don't see it as a theme. If you go through all the responses, you'll probably find it. But that's the one I remember that I got.
Can you maybe share what opportunities remain in different ways for people to maybe continue to engage or like give feedback? You know, because I know we have, people can still come to board meetings and give public comments, they can, they're welcome to email us, or contact any of the board members here. We still have the stakeholder panel that we're putting together, so we can maybe think, maybe being a little bit more intentional about the kinds of people that we recommend to put on there. So maybe there's people from the Latino community that maybe would be a good fit for some of that that we could think about. I guess thinking specifically about what Vice President Rocha brought up. But is there other things that maybe I'm not thinking about, where people may be able to continue to give feedback or share?
Yeah, great question. You mentioned a lot, so I think that's pretty powerful. So one is definitely the stakeholder panel is more about input during the time that the interviews happen, which is definitely one way, but that's kind of, you know, after, it's not before the interviews. As far as like what you could do to get more involvement, if you're like, hey, we just feel like we need it more, and I'll talk to the home office, you know, to see like, what are some of the limitations and not, you know, add more to your contract, per se. But one of the things, like going to Fremont and Marsh schools, would be one example, like, hey, let's just go and we'll talk to the Spanish-speaking families, we can arrange that. Another thing I've done with another district, which I'm trying not to volunteer this option, but what we could do is, we're not going to do full-blown more meetings, per se, because we, there's just not the time to do that. But what you could do is reopen that survey. And you could push it a little bit more and just say, hey, we want another, what we call another round of input session. So we have done that before. So we could do that. And then also, one thought is, you're going to do an inch, so this kind of goes into our next item, right, is the stakeholder panel. We have an interest survey that we've created for you all to allow people to say, hey, I want to be a part of it. You can't pick them all, right? So one thing you could do is utilize whoever showed interest, maybe that can be a group that we can also spend some time with, especially if they're not going to be on the interview panel. So I think we can be creative, because what I hear you saying is, you want to get as much input as possible. But also know that you have to continue with your process, and yes, input is important from your community, and I think it's super valuable, but ultimately, your decision to hire your next superintendent is yours. And so the community is, even in the interview process, they're not going to rank people, they're going to give you strengths and opportunities, and that's not telling you who they think is the best candidate. So it is something you'll have to make your decision on. So we can entertain all of those. You mentioned outreach to the board. I often don't, I don't usually solicit that for you to do that process, because you have enough on your plates, and it's a lot to try to manage that. So I don't know if you want to volunteer that, but I think just you being open to the community to talk to you is obviously important. But we can definitely be available, our information is on the site, right? Maya, as you, you know, kind of continue to share out, I'm not, I can't recall on the page if it has our actual information, but you can share that if they have anything they'd like to share with the consultants, that's usually the best route so that you can keep it streamlined. Yeah, so.
When you first started, you talked about, when you first started to share the data, you said that we were in the, you know, average range in terms of the percentage of folks that you interviewed. I will say, D-LAC had the most parents, I think it was like 30-something parents, I remember looking at the number, 36. I like the idea of you all going to Marsh and Fremont to talk to Spanish-speaking parents in particular, because our Latino population is our largest population in our district. But kind of what you're saying, I feel like we can move along the process, because we have gotten a lot of data and it's connected highly to the data we already have, so it's not, I don't, maybe someone will add something different, but the themes seem to be consistent.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, if you feel like you haven't heard enough of your voices, definitely reopening opportunity, definitely. I agree, you're not going to see too many different themes, but if people want to feel heard, there's nothing wrong with that process either, that's just part of the work. So we're open to it, but just to look at numbers, like, you definitely, I know D-LAC had the largest kind of turnout in one space, but online, you had 59 responses as well. So your parent responses were actually, one of the highest, actually, and then you had, your students were the next one. So those are actually two groups you want to hear from, in particular, who have, what I want to say, the least amount of power in a school district, you want to hear from those voices. So you did that, which is a good thing. You know, you could always use more teacher voice, more classified, which I think classified wasn't as high as we would like it to be either. So it's your direction, what you'd like to do?
I think, I think just my concern is more from the second point of, like, I don't want to make it seem like we're like, okay, we're done, like, hearing, like, we still want to like welcome people to feel like they can continue to find ways to be engaged with this process, or feel like they can continue to, yeah, have a voice here, rather than be like, oh, well, you missed the opportunity, we closed the survey, like, it's done, we finished interviewing people, and rather.
That's fair. We can reopen if you all feel that that's something, it's not an extra step, per se, that's going to cause anything, any harm, but if you want to, and then we can revisit it and we see you in April. So you can just see more voices, maybe there's something that sticks out that you want, that informs you. So that's a simple task of just reopening, and then we can give you the next layer, so it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't know if anyone has any particular thoughts or strong feelings. Yeah, I just kind of have the general idea that I'd love to find ways for people to continue to feel heard.
I don't have a particular, like, to me, the community engagement was one of the reasons why I ran, because I knew it was lacking. So the fact that not a lot of people are responding, because like, I know I spent a lot of time in the community, like, directly connecting with people, like, giving them the survey, like texting it to them from my phone, because I just know that about the lack of engagement. So for me, how I feel about it is like, well, we do have to get a superintendent, let's, you know, obviously reopen it, sure, great, whoever presents is, that's amazing, but the real work is going to happen after we have a superintendent, because that is one of the things I'd like to change.
Yeah, makes sense. And remember, you're, people are surveyed out, so let's be clear. They're surveyed out, there is also perception, not just Antioch, but anywhere, that, oh, I share my voice and it's not going to matter. So I think you have to think of all the elements, but your data is good, so I don't want you to think it's not good. Like, we've done a lot of searches, this is actually a really good number of people. So like I said, I'll do whatever the will of the board is.
I'd like to check to see the dates that they have for E-LAC and both of those schools, because it might be still in this month.
Sure, sure.
And then get back.
That's fair. So I'll check in with you, Maya, about those two. Okay, we'll make it work, yeah.
So it sounds like, I guess, like consensus and comfort is, let's look at Fremont and Marsh, and maybe engaging some of those Spanish-speaking parents, and then open up the survey and just continue to collect responses that, in case people want to submit more responses or, yeah, and that's, that feel good for everybody?
All right, perfect. So last but not least, is your interview panel we talked about, and so just really wanted to open it up if you had questions about the process. Remember, you had a composition of 15 people, and we gave you an opportunity to share who you wanted that to be. And so you had the two administrators, one site, one district administrator, you had two teachers, one from your AEA executive board and one member, you had two classified staff, again, bless you, one from the executive board, one member, three parents, one from elementary, one from middle, one from high school, three community members, as well as three students. So the composition, the way we kind of recommended you go about this, is that if you have recommendations, especially amongst the community, maybe there's some parents, share your recommendations as well, so those would be shared with Maya, and we have a date of April 4th is the deadline to do that, okay? So that's one way to add input. If there's anyone that's interested, also, you can direct them just to communicate with Maya, it could be an email, you name it. I know part of when we did the input sessions, there were a couple of students who were interested, so we gave Maya those names. So as she's collecting those names, one other opportunity is a survey, like an interest survey, which we've created a link to place on the website. So if anyone's interested, it's open for anyone. The dilemma you're going to have is that, based on those numbers, you have to bring it down to 15. So somebody's going to get told no. Keep in mind, though, when we say told no, it's not a no, we're not going to engage anymore, there are other opportunities to engage this group of people. But also, in that group, you're going to need alternates as well. So that actually might be a good thing. So usually with your unions, right, you just ask your union executive team if they kind of have recommendations. That's typically what we do, is let the unions decide. Administrators, typically similar, especially the site administrators, kind of ask a lot of times, principals, you know, who wants, who do you want to volunteer, or you name it. District leaders, sometimes the boards will ask a person, but it could be you ask your district leaders to, you know, maybe have someone to represent. And then again, the parents from each level, you may want to ask the principals about who that might be, or maybe you know. So, you know, I don't want to put you in a box on how you do that, but we've mentioned that at your April, no, 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 April 16th. April 16th meeting is a regular meeting where you have to appoint them. So what we would suggest is, April 4th is our deadline, so that you have time to look at that list, okay? Well, what happened is, you all would kind of decide on, you know, thinking about prior to April 16th, who you'd want, and then in the meeting, because it's a public process and people's names will be given, you all have to decide then. What may happen is, you may have so many community members, for example, that you have to kind of, we've done this, where we literally put all the names, like, in a little, like, jar or hat, and you just randomly pull. You might have to do that, okay? The survey has who the folks are, so if I'm a community member, it asks them to put who they represent, so you actually know ahead of time. So you might have a lot of people, so get ready for that, but be okay with, you know, that's a transparent process you do on April 16. And if there's questions between now and then, just reach out. But Maya is collecting those names, so anyone you need to recommend, you can give those to her.
I think one clarifying question for me, especially maybe people in that show interest, are they also in the interest, aware and confirmed that they're committing to those full two days?
Good question.
Or should we be, you know, as we're looking at that, like, should we reach out and be like, hey, are you available these two days? We are thinking about, like, you know, bringing this to the board.
Yeah, good question. So one is, if you're making the recommendations, I would assume you've been in communication with that person. But if not, one of the things that happens is the communication out to everyone who's considered, that definitely has to be shared, right? So in the survey, it does say, hey, you need to acknowledge, it's an acknowledgement box, like, you acknowledge you'd be available for two days, right? You acknowledge that, again, it'll be public, your name will be public, you acknowledge there's confidentiality, and you'll have to sign a statement. So those are all in that survey, but definitely, as you're communicating with people, you do need to let them know that it is May 1st and 2nd are the superintendent interviews, and they will be expected to be there both days. We don't like people to come one day and then have another. Like, if they're going to be there, they have to be there both days. Although we don't know the schedule, it definitely is something they need to commit to. And remember, you need to have alternates, just in case something happens, you know, and you've appointed someone, and someone gets sick, or has a change of, you know, plans, you want to have someone else in place. So that's why that April 4 deadline is important, so that communication can be sent to those. So make sure you get their emails, their phone numbers, don't forget that, for those that you appoint, that you're recommending to Maya. Maya, did I forget anything? Okay, that was, okay. Dr. D, yes. Okay, all right. So I think, yeah, that was really kind of it for your process. Any final questions on any of it? Okay, remember, reach out, you have our information, reach out. If you, I mean, I think that's everything, I want to make sure I didn't forget, yeah, that's everything. So if you need anything, reach out, and we just appreciate your partnership and excited for you. Yeah, it's moving along. All right, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
This document becomes very popular with your applicants.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Great, so moving on to 13 resolutions for first reading, there are none. 14 resolutions for immediate action, we have item A, resolution number 2024-2550, local agency biennial notice conflict of interest code.
So this is just a required resolution, with the changes that there are, and who can be designated to, or who are subject to that code. So do you want to share?
Yeah, this is a resolution that updates the titles of those individuals that are obligated Yeah, this is, uh, a resolution that updates the titles of those individuals that are obligated to report the Form seven hundred, basically.
Unless there's any questions, uh, I'll entertain a resolution, uh, a motion to adopt the resolution.
Move approval.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt resolution number twenty-two-four, twenty-five-fifty. Local agency biennial notice conflict of interest code. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to B, uh, resolution twenty-two-four, twenty-five-fifty-one. Authorizing provisional internship permit. So I'll turn over to Dr. Martinez.
Yes, just as you said, uh, this is from the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing, which authorizes the issuance of the provisional internship permit. We have one individual who does require this next step in their credential attainment. Uh, so we ask that the resolution be approved so that individual can continue in their position.
Great. So unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I move to adopt the resolution.
Great. So it's properly moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty-two-four, twenty-five-fifty-one, authorizing provisional internship permit. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item C, resolution number twenty-two-four, twenty-five-fifty-two. Approval of filing of applications for state allocation, board administered programs.
So this is a resolution that's stating that we're aware that we have to have a facility master plan in order to apply for state funding for facilities. So we're acknowledging.
And unless there's any questions, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Approval.
A second.
Great. So it's properly moved and seconded to adopt resolution number twenty-two-four, twenty-five-fifty-two for approval of filing applications for state allocation, board administered programs. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes. Under resolutions for second reading and action, there are none. Board policies for first reading, there are none. Board policies for second reading and action, there are none. Information items for general information, there are none. And item nineteen, future agenda items from, uh, board members. Uh, trustee Lathan, any, uh, items? Maybe we'll just go down.
No.
Uh, vice president Rocha?
None.
Uh, trustee Kobo Smith?
Um, I, I have something that I've been wondering about. Um, I haven't discussed it with anybody, but I, we've talked a lot about these, um, alternative to suspension programs. And I would kind of like to know full on from beginning to end what they are, how they're implemented. And I know we just got in the board update, like the monetary, um, benefits, but I would like to know more, that impact to the student in particular, like what does the students feel about these? What do the parents think? Um, how, how is it impacting, um, our schools? I, I know, um, suspensions are down significantly and I appreciate everybody for their hard work on that. But just trying to understand the program a little bit more.
And then trustee Brown? Great. Um, then, uh, individual, uh, additional comments which exceeded the first thirty-minute session, we have none. Uh, reports and comments from, uh, board members, uh, maybe we'll go the other direction now. Uh, trustee Brown?
Um, so I went to Bell Shaw as well, but I didn't get inside because I got stopped by a lot of parents on the outside. So I do believe everything happens for a reason and a purpose. So I really enjoyed conversating with students and parents about their, their breaks for what they're going to do for spring break and just the engagement like trustee Ogle was saying. And I do believe that our district is really looking for more engagements. Um, I did sneak into the Antioch High School, um, Black History. I sat in the back and I enjoyed it. It was really good to see, I mean, there's the, the excitement and I do have some future, um, Cat and the Warblers dancers. And so it was really, really good to be a part of it.
Great. Trustee Kobo Smith?
All right. You guys are going to have to indulge me because I wrote things down. So on March third, I was at Orchard Park kicking off the Read Across America week. I got to read for scholars in Mrs. Dexheimer's TK class, Mrs. Benson and Mrs. Lydicote's kindergarten classes and Miss King's second grade class. And it was lovely. I really enjoyed myself. Um, on March seventh, I got to tour the central kitchen at Deer Valley at the encouragement of Liz. Um, Stephanie Summerine really just has it on lock. You are absolutely correct. And one of the things that just really, when I walked out of there, one of the things that was really impressed upon me was the amount of love that goes into making our children's food. And that was just really pleasurable to see. Um, and I got to take my granddaughter with me. So it was nice for her to see so that she can, um, partake of the offerings, which she has said that after the tour she has started. Um, and I was so shocked that they actually make like spaghetti sauce from scratch. Like this isn't like canned spaghetti sauce, like they're making the spaghetti sauce. So. And she shared with me all the, um, the equipment they were able to purchase with the grants. So I thought that was really phenomenal and the fact that they even took the time to submit those grants. I know that grant submissions often can take time. Um, and so it, that was really great. And then, um, and then so now, and next what I want to do is, you know, we've talked a lot about the challenges and we've all known the challenges. The challenges have been pretty intractable for some time. Um, and so after just immersing myself in the challenges, I just really needed to go into a space of gratitude. And so one of the things that inspired me was, um, my granddaughter was at Park Middle School last year and there were two teachers there. There was Tracy Davis Watkins and Sarah Buckley Carson, who every year they submit for a grant to take their, um, scholars to the Marine Mammal Center. And my granddaughter had such a lovely time. It's like, we still hear about it and she plans on, um, volunteering with them because that was an opportunity once they got old enough. And so I just thought about that and just really wanted to start highlighting, um, in a similar fashion that, um, Dr. Wayne already does, um, the things that I see in the district that are just bright spots. And so on March twelfth, Walter Gorski, he took the mock trial team to the courthouse in Martinez. Um, a lot of the students, my daughters, or my granddaughter is part of the mock trial team. So I got to hear all the experiences and just how inspired the students were coming out of that experience. And then Amanda Freitas, who was here earlier, actually stole my highlight because I was going to shout her out. Her and Becky Soud and Nidia Aras putting on the Annie play in April fourteenth. So whoever's free, I, I know I'm going to be there. I'm definitely going to go to at least one showing. And then last but not least, I would like to say thank you to Jenna Griffin. She, she's an administrative assistant in the maintenance yard. When I asked the CSEA union lead, sorry, my tongue got tied there, union lead to share with me a bright spot among his team, he shared that Jenna's leadership is inimitable and has helped her team navigate some very challenging times. So thank you Jenna for just being you and being a part of AUSD.
Uh, vice president Rocha?
Well, as you know, that March for me is an interesting time because I like to put on, um, Cat in the Hat outfit. So I had an opportunity to do that, especially at Orchard Park because they had, they had, I guess, three classes that I did there. I did it over at Fremont as well. And tomorrow I'll be doing it at, uh, Mission, um, for their reading time. I enjoy that because you get to really see the parents and the children. The children just light up. Um, I am wanting to bring attention to the fact that tomorrow, uh, this, because Caesar Chavez is the month of March. At Antioch High School there is the Song of Caesar, which is very interesting because it was done by a gentleman, um, actually from Pinot. He spent ten years putting it together. I saw it in Los McDonald's College. I was quite impressed because the music they used there is modern music that was in the sixties at the time this was all going during the great struggle. And those people became famous and they, of course, moved on. But to know that they were part of making the funding available for Caesar at that time. I brought it into the high school fully that people will, uh, young people will come and see it. I know it's not somebody that they remember or they know about, but it is of interest because it has music attached to it. And I think it would mean something. So it's four o'clock tomorrow in case you, anybody wants to go at the Beatty Auditorium. And we hope that it comes out all right. Um, the, the other thing is that I would hope that we could close the meeting with Betty Lawrence as our, as our inspirational person that passed. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Lathan?
Yeah. So, um, like, um, a couple of other trustees, I engaged students in Read Across America day four or week. Um, read to Ms. Kennedy's fourth grade class at Orchard Park. And, um, I told them fourth grade was my favorite grade to teach. I was so excited to be there. And they were very engaging and kind students. Um, so I appreciate that opportunity. Um, we had our city schools committee meeting, um, in March as well. Uh, myself and trustee Kobo Smith is on that committee. And I co-chair the committee with, um, council member, Tamisha Torres Walker, uh, from the city. And what I appreciate, one of the things I appreciated about the data here was that people talked about the need for the city and the school district to align. So I feel like the board is ahead of that. Um, and we are making ways to make that happen. It's very positive. We have, um, mayor Protem, um, Louis Rocha, Mary Rocha's son on the committee as well. And the city manager comes and, um, the parks and rec director comes. We also had Ms., uh, Dr. Wisely come from our district. So it's an op, it's even though it's a, it's a, you know, standing committee, folks are welcome to come and comment, um, as well. And if, it, we talked about data this last meeting and it was great to just to understand more like the city data and also the school district data. Um, and so the next meeting we have, I don't remember, but we're, we're going to talk about data just a little bit more, but also go into what our theme has been so far, which is whole child, whole community. And talk about like, um, different ways that we want to go deeper in that. So I feel very proud of our board for establishing or re-establishing this committee, uh, standing committee. And I, it feels like it's going to be a good move, uh, to bridge our city and our district and to really focus on our children and the whole community. Uh, lastly, I'm super excited. This is the second annual, uh, STEM in Living Color event. Um, last year, um, some board members came, but this event came, uh, be, up because, um, I've been just thinking about different jobs and different ways in which we're engaging our students and our community around STEM. And I haven't seen anything in this community. That doesn't mean it never existed. Um, but since the pandemic for sure, I haven't seen a community-wide event. We get grants from the city of, um, Antioch. Um, uh, Concord Mayor has donated. I mean, folks are really, this year, really supporting. We had over a hundred and fifty people come last year who registered. And so we're hoping for more people. Uh, we also have entertainment this year. So basically it's a STEM event. Um, and like trustee Kobo Smith has a booth she's running again this year and it's hands-on. So PG&E will be there, Delta Diablo Water. The picture on the front cover is actually, uh, from last year where, uh, um, architect firm was there and they created, um, they had students create objects and taught them the importance of architecture and what's that like in terms of STEM. And so super excited. This year we're actually, we'll have a stage and we have dancers. We have Bollywood dancers coming. And so when I talked to the instructor, she goes, well, how is that connected to STEM? And I was like, I was a kinesiology major in, in college and, and dance is a study of human movement. And so that is a form of science. Um, so anyway, I'm excited. Saturday, May fourth, um, it's open to the community for free. Um, and it's at Williamson Ranch Park. You can look it up at steminlivingcolor.com to learn more. You can email me as well. And so that's it. Thank you.
And then, um, I also, uh, went to Orchard Park for Read Across America week, uh, where I read to, uh, three different classes. Uh, the first class I read to was a third grade class and I read, um, uh, books that I'd all presented at, uh, different board meetings. So the first book I read was I Am More Than, and that was by LeBron James. And I think my favorite part about that was, um, the students were super excited that it was by LeBron James. And he's like, the basketball player? And I'm like, can you believe he wrote this book? And they're like, no. And they're like, do you think you can both play basketball and write books? And they're like, no. And I'm like, but he did it. And they're like, you can do that? So they were like so surprised that like, you don't have to just pick one thing. You can do all kinds of things. You don't have to just do sports. You can do well academically. You can engage in arts and all these different things. And it doesn't just have to be, uh, you know, the one thing that you do. So I think that was really cool to see them like, you know, start to think like, oh, I don't have to just pick one thing. I can do everything that I want to do. So that was a really cool, um, and fun experience there. Uh, the next, uh, third grade class I read to, um, I read, uh, a book called A Story, uh, that's never been heard before. And the point of the book is to teach kids about how you build all the parts of a story from like a character, a problem, uh, the building like climax and then like the resolution. And at the end of the book, it gives you this little template that you work with, um, people to fill in, like what's the character, what's their problem, how are they going to solve it? And so, uh, together at the end, we, uh, built this story about a capybara who didn't know how to swim, who jumped in a pool, um, and, and, and found swim lessons so that he could learn how to swim and was able to have a good time swimming. Uh, and so that was really fun that like, you know, the class of third graders, I was yelling all kinds of ideas that we were able to, uh, you know, come together and finally come to like one story that we put together. But they had a lot of ideas and there's a lot of other different characters and problems and things going on there. Uh, we almost went with like floaties or like things like that were like fun ideas that were coming up. Um, and then the kindergarten class I read to, um, I read, uh, my favorite book growing up, which was Corduroy, uh, about the little bear that's got a missing button and he thinks he can't be purchased from the store because he's got a little missing button. So he, uh, explores the, the mall looking for that missing button. And so it was, um, cool to see these kids, um, you know, get the story of like, hey, you don't have to be perfect to be someone that's like worthy about like being cared about. Um, and then, uh, I think across all three of these classrooms, they were really big huggers. And I think I got a lot of really great hugs. Um, I don't know if this is a true thing or not, but it's something that, that I definitely have heard that like, you need twelve hugs a day for like growth. And so I definitely got that several times over in some of these classrooms. So that was really cute and, uh, really fun. Um, last, uh, Friday I was at the, or this past Friday, I was at the Contra Costa Science Fair, uh, at LMC. Um, and that was really cool. Um, I got to judge for, um, seventh and eighth graders with biology projects. And these things are just like far beyond even like some of my capabilities on things, like some of the most advanced projects. And these are like eighth graders was what we had. There was like an eighth grader that like built a mini protein model that's supposed to bind to Claudin five, which is a blood brain barrier protein that like weakens over time for like Alzheimer's and things like that. And so he built the whole model. He like worked with like UC Berkeley professor and like has this manuscript that's like waiting to be approved. And I'm like, I'm waiting to like get manuscripts approved and, and I'm not even that far along. So they're, they're way further along than even some of the things I can do. We had like a student that was, um, looking at different, uh, cancer proteins and looking at different like protein drug, uh, binding, using like a lot of like computer modeling, again, like way outside of like things I know how to do, uh, again, eighth graders. Uh, but it was super cool. Um, I did, uh, we don't get told like who participates when we're like judging. And then at the very end we get like a list. Um, and we didn't have any Antioch Unified students then. So I think, I think, you know, one thing that I dream about is, uh, how do we get to a point to like build up maybe some of our capacity here to get students to engage with some of these projects? I think they're really cool. And I think it was a really rewarding experience for, for these students. Um, and then, uh, I think lastly, yeah, I think I just want to talk just a tiny bit about, uh, you know, especially given the, you know, news about Betty Lawrence, just the importance of like music education. Uh, you know, I myself played trombone, uh, in high school here in the school district. I, I had like a little like punk rock band where I played a bass guitar. Um, and music education has like, had like such an impact, uh, I think on like myself and like the rest of my family who also, uh, went through the school district. Like my brother played trombone growing up. And that's why I wanted to learn to play, uh, instruments because I saw him lugging around this like massive trombone every day. And I'm like, oh, I gotta learn how to play something. Um, and that was like a really cool experience also for him. He got to like go to like Hawaii with the Antioch High School band. And that's like something that I think for, for us that like, you know, um, never imagined we'd even like leave the state, um, has been like some of the most impactful, uh, experiences. So, um, just want to emphasize that music education is not just about like the instrument, but also like the other skills and experiences and things that happen. So it is hugely important. Um, and lastly, just to highlight the book, uh, for today, uh, it's this book called I Am Able to Shine, uh, by Corey Watari. Um, and I think, um, uh, man, I think I, I'm, I'm finding that I'm so influenced by like the artwork of books. That's really how I think I choose a lot of them because I think the artwork is absolutely beautiful on this one. Uh, and it's just a great story about, you know, that, um, you know, shining and, and being, um, someone, uh, who can contribute to the world is really something that's like innate, uh, within all of us. And it's just about finding that and bringing that out. Yeah. So with that, um, I think we can go ahead and, uh, move on to future meetings. Uh, so our next meeting, uh, so our regular board meetings that are coming up is April, April sixteenth and May seventh. We do also have a board governance workshop, um, that is, uh, scheduled for, uh, March twenty-sixth, uh, so next Wednesday from four to eight PM. Um, and then lastly, we have adjournment. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn in honor of Betty Lawrence and music education.
Thank you. I move approval.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting in honor of Betty Lawrence and music education. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. And the motion passes.
Okay.